Welcome everyone. I call to order the Beaverton School Board work session for April 4th, 2022. We'll start with a roll call of board members. Please answer with present or if you're not here, don't say anything. So Susan.
Here.
Karen.
Presente.
Eric.
Here.
Sunita.
Present.
And Ugana has let me know that she will not be able to make the first part of the meeting, but she'll be joining us after five o'clock. So she's she's excused for the first portion. Becky.
Here.
Tom, I am here. Okay, well then let's start with our first item. Board members, just to let everybody know, there's been a slight change in the order of items we're going to hear today. We'll be hearing the student discipline report a little bit later after 5:00 PM. So Ugana can be with us for that item. And we're starting then with the grading and reporting update. So I believe John Bridges, John Franco and Brian Sika, you guys are going to lead us off.
Yeah, thanks, Tom. Thanks, everybody. I'm glad to see you. Welcome to the work session. Thanks for getting us the opportunity to present on grading reporting. Um. Just a little bit of logistics for you as we jump into this. It's myself, Dr. Bridges and Dr. Franco. We're all here. John Franco and myself will be doing the majority, in fact, all of the presenting to you. And then Dr. Bridges is here to help with any data questions and any questions at the end. So like we've done in the past, what would be helpful? If you have some questions that are, you know, pretty detailed, that's great. Um, if you could write them down and even maybe note the slide number. You'll notice on the presentation in a moment when I share my screen, we'll have the slide number on there and then just save the questions till the end. If there's something as we're talking, it's just not clicking, totally appropriate to to jump right in and ask us to clarify. But for those, you know, more standard questions, it might be a little, it might be more smoother streamlined for us to answer them at the end. So give me just a couple of seconds. I'm going to share my screen and kind of reorient to zoom here. Hopefully you're seeing a slideshow with a little bit of blue colors. So just a reminder to the board why we're talking about grading and reporting right now. And in the fall of this school year, so fall of 2021, we came to the board with the change, a significant change, the grading reporting practices, which had some. Had some, some dealings with some contingencies under policy IK. And what we changed was we removed the mark of F or failure from the opportunities for secondary teachers to use. And we encouraged and increased the use of the I for incomplete or the N for no grade. So just a couple of clarifications as we've gone through to some reminders to the board and reminders to anyone who's who's listening here. Nothing from the grading scale where we would consider soon to have passed the class or in high school earned credit. Nothing about that threshold changed. So the the lower limit, the lower limit of demonstrating proficiency for a credit remained the same as it always had. This is all about increasing the work we're doing and increasing our opportunity to support students who are not yet able to demonstrate proficiency um, in ways that we started to do in the past, but this is building it out to a much, much greater scale. And we hope to be much more successful than we have in the past. Um, what you'll see today is you saw in your packet and you'll see in a minute is just a whole lot of data. We're in a spot right now where we can collect data from the first semester that we've undergone this change and compare it to the last semester that we had before the change. So you'll see kind of a number of different data sets, but sometimes it'll be data sets just about this, the the first semester of this year that we've kind of previously ended. And then sometimes you'll see some data sets that compare last, the end of last school year to this school year. And we'll talk about how that's influencing our thinking and how it's influenced our planning and those types of things. So again, you'll hear Dr. Franco first. He'll be speaking quite a bit to the high schools. We'll transition. I'll spend a little bit of time talking to you about middle schools. We'll take it back to Dr. Franco to to close it down and then I'll help to facilitate that question and answer at the end. So if that sounds okay, we'll go. And again, if there's things you need us to answer in the interim, don't be shy. Feel free to unmute and we'll do the best we can to answer. So with that, Dr. Franco, I'll push it over to you. Just let me know when you'd like me to advance the slides.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Dr. Sika. And so just a reminder to the school board and and everyone who is on is that we did, we did present some of this at the February session or the February board meeting, but it was incomplete because it was, it was data collected as of January 20th. So what you're going to see currently is our current first semester data, right? So it's a little bit more complete. So this first slide and and just like what what Dr. Sika said, you know, it's a ton of data. It's satellite data, if you will, but it's a great data point for us that we can use for dialogue. And we are using moving forward. Okay, so yeah, please hold your questions to the end and hopefully we can shed some light on some of the good work that's happening. So here you'll see just aggregated high school mark reports. And so this is and this is not the number of students. This is just the number of marks. And so as you can see, and as Brian alluded to, and thank you so much for your support with the removal of the F mark. But instead, we have incorporated the incomplete and the no grade, the P is is pass. And so for those of you don't know, we do, schools do have autonomy to issue pass grades. Basically, what that means is those are credit bearing marks. But they don't, in a sense, hurt or help a GPA. And pass grades are generally given in conjunction with or in consultation with, you know, the school, the counselors and parents. And so this kind of gives you an idea about where we're at in terms of just the number of marks that were given out for semester and then what that equates to in regards to a percentage. Brian, next slide. Okay, so and you'll see this and it was included and I'm not going to kind of, I'm not going to go over every school, but just wanted to kind of give you an idea. And so obviously these are the six comprehensives within the district and you could see a little bit with how the marks. You know how it looks. And as you can see, and they they similarly follow the same trend in terms of there are definitely more As that are given out and and we have a line graph that will kind of show a little bit of the distribution moving forward. Brian, next slide. Here are the options. And again, it's the, it's the same as the second chart that was that we just looked at. It's that this pertains to the option schools. And again, what I like to pay attention to here is generally not, or in these types of charts, is generally not the number. But you can really, the percentages is something to really kind of take a look at. And then in a future slide, you'll be able to see in the line graph how it actually looks like trend wise and to see if there are any outliers. Now, Brian, next slide. And speaking of, here's a line graph that we just talked about. And as you can see, overarching, Lee, which is good, the trend is way more passing grades than there are Is or incompletes, but you do see. We do have some outliers. You can see the outlier there in terms of the N. And again, mind you, I'll say this too. You know, and I is in an N even so to speak. I mean, those aren't negatives. We like to refer those as just like with what they are. Those are incompletes or not there yet. And so with our credit recovery systems and also with summer school, you know, the the inclusion of the IMN allows for more opportunities to for students to make up credit as opposed to before. What was that? Well, you can, and then you can see the legend there to the right, which lists the school. Brian, next slide. And so this is just again, just a different way of looking at it. And so as you'll see for the next few slides here, the difference between each of the buildings or just gives you a snapshot of what it looks at the buildings. And you could see the one difference that we added here is you, we also listed the school enrollment. So that is a category that wasn't on the first few slides. But you can kind of see not only what we originally talked about or originally showed in terms of letter grades, but you can see how that pertains to the, to the school enrollment. And mind you, remember, these are not the number of students, but the number of marks. Next slide. Okay, same thing here for a low in Beaverton. Just gives you the same type of data, but of course we included the school enrollment again, just gives you just a different way of looking at the data. Next slide. Same thing here for Sunset and Westview. You can take a look again, the school enrollment. Again, it's just a, it's just a good data point that we look at. Because I think it's always important. Here's the number of marks that are given, but what is, you know, what is the total population of the school and kind of give you an idea about, okay, so if I have this many marks and here's my population. That means gives an idea about how many students are receiving more than once a or B. Again, satellite data to its finest. Next slide. Again, another line graph depicting the data that we just saw. Again, you could see the mark distribution according to school, according to comprehensive high school. Okay, next slide. Thank you, Brian. Okay, so here is what we've broken down in terms of this. This is the number of I marks per school. And so I again is incomplete. And just like what Brian said, it's a comparison. And so like, for example, I'll give you like, if we just take a look at a low high school. So if you take second semester of last year, the number of students with I's was 237. And this is what was really cool too, is you could see the average per student is 1.49. And then if you look at, you know, second semester, if you take a lower, for example, that 322 number of students with I's, but then the average goes down. Okay, so what that tells you is yes, there's more students with I's, but there's also less students who had multiple. And so, you know, that's why that average is is significant. If you take a look at, you know, obviously we don't want, we want the number of students with I's to go down and we want the average to go down. Right? And so if you take a look at Beaverton High School, for example, the number of students with incompletes from second semester of last year, 315, if you take a look at the average. And I can't, Brian can't, away you can move your cursor to Beaverton High. So 315, then 1.64. And then if you notice, again, satellite data, okay, that's it's, it gives you an idea, but obviously it just gives, it's a data point. But not only did the number of students with incompletes go down, but then the average went down, right? And so that that's really what we are hoping to get in terms of trend moving forward. So it just gives you an idea of where we're at in terms of the comparison. Brian, next slide. Okay, so this gives you an idea of different groups of students, which obviously we are very cognizant about. And it makes sense for us to to look at again, same type in terms of the actual number. But then also it's pertinent to also look at, you know, what the average is. And as you can see, you know, even like, like I mentioned before, for some the number did increase, but then the average went down. Okay, so. I think it's all again, really good data for us to kind of dig into. Next slide, Brian. Okay, so what we did look at was incompletes. Here's N's. Okay, the number of N's. So remember, N's is no grade. And so if you take a look again at second semester of last year, again, same type of idea here. And so and when we look at the data as schools and we're very good about looking at the data, we do look at the I's and the N's. We look at it separately, but then we also look at them together. Because it is definitely possible that you could have not that many I's, but then your proportion of N's is significant or vice versa. Right? And so it's important that we do look at them together. But again, if we look at a low high school, for example, again, just because it's at the very top. So second semester of last year, you take a look at the number of N's again, which stands for no grade. And then if you look at the average, right, and then do the comparison. You know, so that is a significant drop. And I think that you could take that for what it is. But that's why I think it is important that we do compare and contrast, so to speak. But I think overwhelmingly you can see that the number of no grades did, if we run a comparison from second semester of last year to first semester of this year, did go down significantly. And so the ends and just, just a reminder, what the ends tell us is that there's just no evidence. Incompletes means that there is an evidence. There is regardless of how small that is, if there is evidence at all, a student will get an incomplete. If there's none, zero, then it is an N. So the more incompletes, you know, that means students are submitting some things. And so this, I think this is, this is really good data. All right, next slide. And again, just broken down by the different groups, just like with the last, with the the last slide. You could see, again, this is for N marks. I'm sorry, there was, let's see, yep, it is N marks. Again, just gives you an idea. And naturally, because you saw it overarching, Lee, that we went down in terms of comparison from second semester last year to first semester. It made sense to say that we're making progress with with our different groups. Next slide. All right, and I'll turn it over to Brian and he's going to talk about middle schools.
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Franco. Similar data that we have across, I'll just point out a few key pieces. This is, is it's our middle schools. And remember the significant difference with the middle schools and the high schools is the middle schools are not awarding credit. And so while they still have the same grading scales and still work to give students the same amount of feedback and they certainly still have that same value for the learning that goes inside the classroom. Um, that just kind of transactional piece of a credit, of course, just doesn't exist in the middle schools. However, we can see really similar trends. When you look at the schools, if you look on the left hand side of this, the kind of first two columns of numbers there, those are all of the middle schools that, and you can see all of them, except of course, Tom Waters, they didn't have students yet. All of them were using I's and that's going to become important in just a second. And then this year, they all continue to use I's and the number of I's decreased from the second semester of last school year to the first semester of this school year. And I think some of that, and I would think some of this is in play with the high schools as well. Just goes to the awareness that this sort of initiative or this transition has brought to the concept of continuing learning all the way throughout the semester and how teachers and students are just many more of them are continuing to work on a learning target by learning target way to to work through their classes. Again, similar to our high schools, if we know from the previous slide that we saw a decrease overall and the number of I's that were awarded from second semester last year to first semester of this year, we would expect, of course, to see see, see a drop as well when we look disaggregated by our race and ethnicities. And you'll see that by this slide. Drops in all areas. We noticed a fairly interesting trend on our next slide. So this is now looking at N's. And again, this is that additional marker, another mark that we use in lieu of using the F, the N being that no grade or no evidence yet that the student has demonstrated or been able to demonstrate towards proficiency of standards. During the second semester of last school year, we did not have many schools, many of our middle schools using the N's. They were, they had already been starting to use the I's. So this is just an example of how maybe call this our new system or our evolve system just gives more opportunity to be a more clear piece of communication. Now, instead of just having the eyes in our middle schools, now they're comfortable using the I's and the N's. And you can see that on the second kind of set of column, these, these last two columns of data show that, you know, all the middle schools are using I's as well as N's now. And so when you're thinking about data, some of the increase in the number of N's, you know, by the schools using them now probably does account for some of the decrease that we saw with I's, right? Maybe they would have gotten an I last year in a similar situation now that you need an N. But when you take the time to total, like the total number of I's and N's last year and the total number of I's and N's this year, we still are seeing that decrease across the board, which again is a testament to just the continued continued focus on learning that this, this change is helping us to increase. And again, the similar to to previous slides, though, we won't have, this is a little bit more difficult to compare because not all the schools are using the N's in the first, first year of this data set. So second semester of last year, since now the middle schools were using N's. It, that's why you're seeing the increase to this year, just because so many more schools are using them, using the N's in their repertoire of communication. All right, that was your snapshot for middle school. Hang in there. We're getting to the data. We're about ready for your questions, but John has a few more, few more slides to go through with you.
Yeah, I thought you thought all of you'd like to see this. This is by content area or subject in terms of the percentage of incompletes and ends. And again, we're running the comparison from first semester or second semester of last year to first semester of this year. And again, if if a good thing to look at again, is just kind of what the you know, the percentages look like, just kind of give you an idea. And again, mind you, you know, incomplete means there's some semblance of evidence that a student has submitted. The N or the no grade means there hasn't been any evidence submitted. And so this just kind of gives you an idea about you know, the different content areas. Next slide. And then the same thing holds true here for middle school. And again, a comparison between second semester of last year and first semester of this year in terms of incompletes and the no grades. Okay, thank you, Brian. Okay, and here is so this is as, so we did share again, as of, I think, when we presented, it was as of January 20th. What the current data was. And so this is as of first semester, the end of first semester this year in terms of, you know, credits, so credits recover. And you, and and obviously broken down by by groups. And so you can see a little bit, now, mind you, and you'll see this also on the next slide. Go ahead and go to the next slide too, Brian. Uh, this is by school. And then it's, there's a continuation moving forward, I think, to other schools on the last slide. So I just want to want to caveat to this is that it's, it's still incomplete in a sense that you know, how how synergy works or how we were able to access this data is, is using course codes. You know, so for example, you know, if a student needs to recover AGS1 because they had an incomplete or no grade, you know, we looked for that same level of course code. And that gate gives us this number. Okay, so I guess what I'm saying is, you know, if, for example, because we're a standards based learning system and we are into making up learning targets and we, we also have schools that don't necessarily use the exact same course code to make up credit or learning targets, right? And so that is not captured here in this data. So this is, this is incomplete in a sense that we're comparing apples to apples in terms of course codes. Whereas we know for a fact that more credit is being recovered just through learning target recovery and say different courses that that other schools are using. And so we're just, we're trying to figure that out in terms of how to gather that subset of of data so that we can have a more complete picture. But even if, say, you just take a look at what this data is. Like if you take a look at like, for example, Beaverton High, Southridge High and the number of grade changes, but then also the number of credits recovered. And Brian, do me a favor, go back to the the last slide. I think it shows the different groups. I mean, you could see the benefit that we're having. If you, if you just take a look at our students with disabilities, for example, or Hispanic, Latino. You can see there's definite positive moves being being made in terms of credits being recovered. And I think there's one more slide, Brian. Oh, nope. That's it. Thank you.
Susan.
Well, I have a couple of questions. One, I noticed with the listing of middle schools, Whitford is missing. Is there a reason for that?
Yeah, I can address that, Susan. So they're on a proficiency based system. So they're reporting summary judgments instead of letter grades. So for last year, the change with the I and N programming and also just being in CDL and hybrid made the behind the scenes grade reporting not work well. So it wasn't any reportable data. And then the same thing this semester, the teachers don't issue letter grades.
So even though we are looking at middle schools that are, you know, forget what we called it, but you know, that they do things the same, basically. Whitford is still doing their grading differently than all the the rest of our middle schools is what I'm hearing. And that was, I would recommend that next time there's like a little asterisk. So we all know that the reason that Whitford's not there is because their grading system's different. And then my other question is about like slide number three and flux online, their numbers seem to be skewed. And I was wondering if you had any insight into that. Like their numbers are really high for N's and I's.
Susan, go ahead, John. Susan, did you say slide number three is how you said? I didn't catch the part about the three.
Yeah.
Let me, I can pull it back up. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I don't necessarily know that I can give you a a direct, I mean, if you talk to Paul, he'll say the exact same thing, I think. And if you talk to I think Merlot potentially could fall in that category as well. Is that when you're talking about an alt, an alternative setting, if you will, is that you know, there's, there's a, there is, it is a distinct reality that you know, that students that come over are not necessarily exceeding in the comprehensive environment, or they need a little something different. And so the reason that question comes about from counselors or from a student is because you know, there are, they are credit deficient already, or they've already been struggling, right? And so when they come over to a flex online or to Merlot, it is at that point in time, okay, not only is trying to get acclimated to the new environment, but to also it's, 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 it's ketchup. So in other words, like, for example, if I bring Merlot over, there's a point in time where we you know, we're coming over and we're seeing more kids who are a little bit older, who technically would be juniors or so coming over who are already potentially or could be a little bit behind from a credit perspective. And so even though, say, the four year graduation rates, we're trying to improve upon, the five years actually outstanding. You see, because you just need a little bit of time to catch up and to move forward. And I'll say the same is true for for flex. Uh to catch up and to move forward. And I'll say the same is true for for flex.
So my comment about flex would be two things. One, one is, I was thinking about the common middle school experience, so. I didn't realize that grading wasn't part of the common middle school experience. It's it's more curriculum. I would say that that's not clear. And then the other thing I'm I'm thinking with flux online is. There's multiple reasons, at least that's from my understanding, why students and high school students and elementary school. Students go to flux online, and it's not necessarily all because they're behind in school. They may have mental health issues, and so I I one want that to be acknowledged and to um. Because they might might have mental health issues, there might be other reasons why their grades aren't a certain way. So. I, you know, I I bring that up because it really concerns me. That how we look at things in terms of, and that would be true for the community school as well, why kids aren't in a. Comprehensive setting, so I just.
Yeah, no, I thank you, Susan. I absolutely agree. And like like I said, this is why it's important to to note that this is satellite data.
Yeah.
When we get to street data is what we like to call it. Um it's getting down to the bottom of it, just like with what you said, all those types of things that come into play. And so we just can't look at this. It gives us a data point, but we know that there are stories.
Yeah.
Beneath that.
So I guess this is interesting, but I'm wondering like this. And I I know I'm sounding kind of, uh I don't mean to be, but I'm just trying to understand. The point behind this, in a sense, then if we're, you know, in terms of digging into it, we're not really looking at it as to. Why certain things are the way they are. Why are we looking at this? Because it's something new that we have the, we don't have F's and so. We're looking at how many students are eyes and ends.
Yeah, I I think, again, when you're when you're talking about data, first and foremost, that we we need, like, this is the reality. Okay, so we made the, we made the change away from the removal of the F, and so it made sense to look at this piece about. Um okay, what what are the number of eyes that we're getting? What are the ends? But I think more importantly. To see, because that was a big piece, that was a big question. Uh from the board about when we actually made this move to the I and the N. Will this give our students more opportunities to make up credit? And I think if you just take this as face value. Again, without getting into, you know, trying, and and mind you, this is a data point, this gives us an avenue to move forward. Um so that we can get more of the street data, so to speak. Um it gives us a kind of a path.
So.
Right, so where are we making some progress?
So the big thing is for these students is to see the ones with the eyes and the net ends is to see. And obviously, some of them have cut in half, you know, from last year to this year. Of course, last year was a COVID year, which kind of made it unique in a lot of ways. But it's going to be looking at middle, the summer school to see how they're recovering their grades. So really, we're looking at right now, because, I mean, again, I say that last year was kind of a major aberration because. We started back in school, I think it was a first, a year ago now, and in person. And so we're looking at kind of skewed things that way, but the point is that. We want to look at the eyes and ends to see how many go to summer school for recovery.
But I think also, Susan, well, well, Susan, I think that's a really great point in in yes, but and though. We we've, we've sort of always had the opportunity to have like the summer school time for recovery. But the point in time data that we're looking at now, where you saw the part about the number of eyes that have been, you know. Converted, if you will, the credits now. So that's that like on time help for a student, essentially still in the same semester. That they um demonstrated that incomplete, they were then also able to to earn credit. And so a couple of things there, right? They didn't have to wait till summer school, they didn't have to repeat an entire course, and so. It's us seeing like, are we starting to build in those systems that can be really supportive of students? If you remember, one of the big things we talked about was not just changing the name just to change the name, right? Not just going I from F, and that's it. But is this pushing us towards changing our practices at our schools? And one of the things that we're starting to think that that's a yes, that we are, is those eyes that are turning into credits. Right away as opposed to waiting.
So you know what? In terms of all the numbers, I need to hear it that way versus seeing all the numbers. I mean, it's important that because the numbers get a little overwhelming and, you know, hearing it in terms, and it's good news. But for me, you know, data's, I mean, some people love data, you know, I know that, but for me, it's just like. Give me like the hard, you know, the hard answers, like, you know what? We're doing things right now that are making a difference for our students and all of our students. You know, and so that's what I'm hearing and and honestly what I'm seeing, but still, it was. I appreciate you breaking it down that way. Thank you.
Becky and then Sunita.
First of all, thank you. I know this is a lot of work. Um. Getting all of this information, I appreciate that. And also, I, you know, I had a lot more. Questions when I was reviewing the information over the weekend and and today, um and you answered a lot of those uh in your presentation, so. Um I appreciate that. I was really, you know, wanting to know how many of the students, individual students received multiples, eyes and ends, and you. You uh came up with that. My my, I have uh three questions. One, um which you were just going into quite a bit with Susan on the credit recovery. Um I I know, I would assume that a lot of those numbers were credit recovery, we were able to do this last summer. And or is that also included of folks that got eyes and ends? The first semester that just ended and they're in the process of of doing it now.
Yeah, so if you're.
Oh, go ahead.
No, sorry, this is.
No, 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 we we did have a protocol here, Becky.
Like, I know, right? We like.
I know, I keep forgetting, you go, you go for it, man.
So from a, from like a sort of pragmatic, like what could be possible. Everything you said is happening in our schools now, so kind of to Susan's point. Yes, it's from students who got an I previously, and yes, it's from students currently getting an I, that on time. Kind of remediation, if you will, that on time help, but let's kick it to Dr. Bridges, maybe, I don't know, John, do you have some insight on? This exact data set, what of that scope it may capture?
So. What this captures is, as Dr. Franco said, it's kids who had an I or N. At the end of semester two in a course, and that. Grade has been changed to a passing mark for the same course. So the kid has been working. Over the summer, not necessarily summer school, or this year with the teacher to complete the work. To demonstrate some level of proficiency that is awarded as credit. The other piece that's incorporated here that was not when we reported in January. Was kids that went to summer school and took the same course or were scheduled for the same course. That they had not completed in semester two and recovered that credit. So that's what's included. And again, as Dr. Franco said, kids are covering lots of credits, recovering lots of credits over the summer. But it's under a different course ID, and we're not able to match those up. So in that respect, it's incomplete.
Okay, I I and I know, I know this is, we're developing this as we go, and it's and it's like, where do you stop? And count the data and not going, I mean, I I I absolutely get it. Yeah, um but um. My other than question is, did we at all consider breaking this down by grade level? Especially at high school, the ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth.
What I, we, I I know, once, maybe Dr. Bridge will jump in there, some of the trickiness in that and some. Subjects, it would work better than others, but when we end up with those mixed grade classes.
Right.
You know, you'd have like tenth and eleventh graders in the same course code. I I think we could still break it down if that's something that would be more helpful to see, like. You know, we know chemistry class as a science class is mostly tenth graders, um because that's where it is in our sequence. Um. But we probably, I don't know, J- John Bridges, I I think we could probably further break it down by student grade level if we could get to that level of detail.
Yeah, we could do it by grade level, uh but there wouldn't be any data for the ninth graders because. They were eighth graders last year, and they wouldn't be recovering eighth grade credit, because as Dr. Sika said, there is no. Eighth grade credit, so to speak, so, but we could in the future look at. Credit recovery for current tenth, eleventh, and twelfth graders. Based on what they did the prior year, that second semester.
And and I know we do a really thorough job, um and we we have been for years, that ninth grade on track. Because we know that how important that is for our ninth graders. So I I believe we have a, you know, probably a pretty good lock and load. Um uh system for that, a process for that. Um I'm I'm just, would be just more curious as a board member. How many of these eyes and ends are you getting as a junior or senior, and what that's going to then take to get you? Um graduated in your course recovery. Um is is that the, is it the majority? Is it more? Is it more at that entry level? Because we do know coming back from COVID of. That eyes and ends coming more as a ninth or a tenth grader, or is it more eleventh and twelfth grader that we've missed some? That it it's just another, you know, a point for me to just kind of see. Um, you know, that information. And then the other thing would be for me somewhere down the road. Is um as we're comparing the eyes and the ends of why we went to the eyes and the ends. Of, and again, I know it's not the same students, but how many Fs we were giving out and what kind of. Somewhere down the road, what kind of difference that makes to our students? Why we changed from that so that we could provide that credit recovery and and that sort of thing. So. I know, I know it's almost next to impossible because the students are different, so you're not doing a a direct. But it would just be curious for me, how many Fs we gave out before COVID? At the, at the first semester versus the eyes and the ends that we're giving out now. So that's just, but besides that, I I know how much it is to get all this information, and I. I appreciate it, and I do believe we're going to be able to build upon this.
Sunita and then Karen.
Thank you for the information. This is uh helpful and especially to see that we are giving more time to kids to recover their credits. Um, I have a couple of questions. I'll go by slides. On number one slide, you talked about P. And I want to understand a little bit more about the pass. Because I noticed in the future slides that ISB and community schools have a higher number of P's. So I want to understand what does a P, what type of classes are these, and does it affect their GPA? What what is it? Why? Why is it that one school will have a higher number of P classes, whereas the other schools may not?
Let's try this one. Uh Sunita, thank you for the question. Great question. I'll give you the general sort of what a P means. Um, uh Dr. Franco, hopefully, maybe you can speak a little bit. I'm not sure if you have insight on the specific schools. I'm I'm not sure. I would have to get that to you. Um but uh what a P is, is it means. That the teacher and the student have been able to look at enough evidence, so the student's been able to turn in enough work, if you will, turn in enough evidence. That they do pass the class, they would earn credit, right? Um but it doesn't delineate between was it an A, a B, a C, or a D, right? It's just a pass. So you do earn credit for the class. So if it's at the high school level, you earn credit towards those twenty-four credits required for graduation.
Does it affect their GPA? Sorry.
No, no, good question. It does not. So um when the computer calculates what the GPA is. Those those classes do not count. Um we do have some policy around what can be. A a a pass, no pass class from the start. Um however, any any student and their counselor and the administrator. Um they can have a conversation about a particular class, and if that happens, policy would allow it to happen on a more individual basis. Than a large class level. Um and John, did you have insight on those two schools? I'm not, I'm not sure why they have more.
Yeah, you know, I don't, but that is definitely something I could ask the principals about, if that's uh some information you would like.
John, I think I do. So if I remember right, at ISB. Uh, oh, Brian, help me. The. Course that the kids take as eleventh and twelfth graders, that's not a subject course.
Oh, T T, okay, theory, theory of knowledge?
Theory of knowledge. That's pass, no pass. At community school and. Dr. Franco, you can help me with this one. It's the course that the kids, all the kids take, it's not advisory, it's uh.
Discovery, John.
Thank you. That's it. I think those are all graded pass, no pass. And then the other things that are in there are things that that kids. Should be getting credit for, but there's not learning involved, like teaching assistant or something like that. So they want to transcript that credit. But it's not uh, a letter grade's not involved with that. So those are the things that come to mind that apply to all schools.
Okay, my next question is, and you know, where you, I think it's slide eleven or the ones before, but. They are in multiple, where the the grades have gone up. But the average has gone down, and I'm trying to understand how are you coming up with that number of the average? Because if your numerator is the number of grades, what is your denominator? Is it the total number of students in the school? Is it the total number of eyes or Fs or ends? What is it? How are you calculating that? Because it doesn't make sense to me.
It's so the, that was great questions, you need is, what the request was for was not only the number of students. With eyes or the number of students with ends, but the average numbers, uh average number of eyes. For students that had an I, or the average number of ends for students that had an N. So if we just look at, say, the first. The first line, Native American students, there were twelve students that had eyes. In semester two last year, eight students that have eyes in semester one this year. So that's, that's good. The number of students with eyes is going down, but at the same time. For those students that have eyes, the average number of eyes is actually going up. So semester two was one point six seven, and now it's up to one point eight eight.
Oops, it happened here. Okay, I'm sorry, my I my computer might just blanked out. But how are you getting that average number was my question. How are you calculating that average number?
So for the uh, let's take the Native American students again for semester two. There were twelve students that had eyes, and there were a total of, I can do the math off the top of my head. I think twenty, those twelve students had twenty eyes. On their semester two report cards last year. So a total of twenty eyes divided by twelve students that had eyes is. One point six seven is the average number of eyes per student with an I.
I see. Okay, okay. So it's it's that particular student, how many total. Number of students with eyes, and then those students, how the total number of eyes they have. Okay?
Yes.
Okay, alright, okay, thank you.
So you'll end up seeing that quite a bit as we go through data. It's one that kind of catches us sometimes when we want to be careful with like. E- even in discipline referrals, I'm not sure if they'll go into it today, but. You know, the difference between a student having like one discipline infraction, or, you know, so the the number would just be one, right? Or that same student may have twenty disciplinary i- in fractions for that one student. So it tends to be helpful for us to see like how many of that particular student of 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 just about everything we we measure in here. So we'll see that quite a bit uh in the in the days and years to come.
Got it. Thank you. Thank you for explaining that. That helps.
Karen?
Hi, hi, everybody. Thank you for the information, and I think. Um like the English saying, the details in the puddings, you know, and I'm I'm excited to see. That students didn't totally give up on us, and that they're actually students who are earning parts of those credits. And that we're setting up a system that helps them get the rest of their credits so that they can actually graduate and go on to that next step. The more we can figure out our system for tracking and cleaning up the data with that coursework, I think. Um the better this system will be so that our counselors and our school teams. Can easily know who needs what supports to pass what courses and what pieces of those courses need to be passed. And so that we can also plan out our summer schools in a more targeted way. Um and so that we can also use um our SIA funds in a more targeted way to support our high schools and our students in that way. This data to me should be most useful to our building teams and to the people developing those systems for credit recovery than more to our board. This data to me should be most useful to our building teams and to the people developing those systems for credit recovery than more to our board. But this is great. Um, that we have this information. Um, as I look through like on slide 23, um, it talks about those final marks that were changed. I still see that, um, a larger percentage, for example, on mine it says 23, is that 23 on yours? It says 2020 high school final marks changed, that's a February 15. Uh, no, not that one. It's a different slide number on mine, sorry. Uh, 23?
Okay. This one maybe, Dr. Press?
Be 47, yes.
Okay.
20 on yours. Sorry about that. Um, I still see that, you know, 142 of our Hispanic students as compared to 123. And I know that the percentage um, of Hispanic students is actually lower in our district than that of white. So it's still like, what system changes do we need to have in order for those for such a high number of our Hispanic students not to be in this situation? Um, and then the next slide after that. When I look at that one, I wonder about the one that says 2020, 21 high school final marks charged by February. Um, and I look at arts and communication, I see that only about 30% of the kids are getting credit recovery. If I'm doing the math correctly, as opposed to the other schools that it's mostly like half of the kids are, right? So I'm wondering what supports arts and communications team might need in order to bump that at least up to a 50% of their kids like the other schools. Um, and I know they're each a little bit different. Um, but mostly, I mean, it's great that we're figuring this out now and that we can continue to improve our system and figure out those course, course numbers so that we can actually make this the most useful information possible for our counselors and our teams that are really targeting this support for our students. And one of my concerns originally was when the school, high schools were presenting, each one had kind of a different plan on how to address. I remember that Beaverton High School had worked with their staff and had it like really detailed, like each course has, they knew exactly which standards were being taught at what time. And if the student didn't pass a certain part of it, they knew exactly what they needed to teach. And then, but I didn't hear that from Aloha or from some of our other schools. And so if we can shore that up, I think that will also help benefit all of our students, um, in this process. But thank you for this work. I mean, let's keep it, we keep it moving. And I'm excited that our kids are, um, doing the work. Um, and if they get stuck somewhere in that process and get an, um, an incomplete, they don't have all the evidence yet that we are giving them an opportunity to show that they can actually get the rest of that credit and earn it. Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
Well, I have a couple of questions. Um, thank you. Appreciate the, the chance to take a look at this data. Um, at kind of like Becky was asking, I'm wondering about some baseline data to be able to understand where we are at now compared to where we've been in the past. Um, and when I was looking at the ends and the eyes, I was wondering, you know, how does that compare if we were to go back multiple years in the past to where we were at with Fs, right? And maybe aggregate the ends and the eyes and compare them to the F so that we can see what that difference actually looks like. The other thing I noticed is that we're comparing, um, semester two to semester one. And I was wondering, as the school year progresses, do we see an increase? In previous years, it would have been an increase in Fs, but now it'd be an increase in ends and I's as the school year progresses. Is that a trend line or is it pretty steady so that every semester looks similar to every previous semester? And that would be when we're taking a look at some past data and understanding that baseline. The, the reason I'm asking that question is, is there a natural tendency to increase the number of ends and I's as time goes on? So if you're conspiring, comparing semester two to semester one, um, then there's going to be a natural difference there just because that's the tendency in the data as, as time has passed. Um, I know those are questions that require more data and time than we have right now, but I would love some follow up on that. That would be really helpful. Um, and then lastly, um, I wanted to understand a little bit, um, better about credit recovery. Um, and those later slides and trying to understand the number of credits recovered compared to the population of students that require credit recovery. So getting some percentages in there, I think would help to understand what percentage of students have recovered credits. Um, and over what period of time that would, that would be helpful to understand as well. Um, and I guess I will add this to, I apologize, final comment. But with Flex Online, um, uh, you, you know, we talked a little bit about the data there. Um, and I, I heard you guys when you were saying that we have some students who may be coming into Flex Online uh, with credits that, um, that are e- either, either behind or they've lost some of those credits. I would be interested in seeing what percentage of the population coming into Flex with, um, lost credits is compared to that population a semester in the future or a year in the future. How is Flex set up? And what supports do they have in Flex to support students with credit recovery? Cause I know that's a different model. That's a different curriculum. And how, how are we looking at credit recovery in that model and in that curriculum? So that's a lot of information. I'd be happy to follow up with an email and provide some more clarification or some bullet points, but, um, it would help me in understanding what this data actually means for the changes that we have made as a board to our grading and reporting. And I think with that, then we
Hey, Tom, I forgot one question.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Sorry. Um, I also wanted to see the data broken down by, um, English language learners or multi, you know, multilingual students. Uh, we did at the other, at the beginning, um, because we have it down as Hispanic, but I didn't know if you meant, are they Hispanic? Um, and English language learners or ever ELS or, so some of that breakdown for me would be helpful. Um, knowing that there's a, a large percentage of students who are in high school that when they qualify for ELD, um, statewide, the trend is that they're not graduating. So it's almost like 60% of those students are not graduating if they're within the ELD program in high school. So I wanted to see if that's true in our district as well. And wanted to keep track of that. So if you can break it down by our ELD, that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your questions and comments. I saw Dr. Bridges taking some feverish notes, so, um, we'll be able to follow up when, in, in subsequent, and I'm sure we'll be coming back, um, regularly to continue to update as we continue to improve in our grading and reporting for the district. So, uh, Chair Colette, it's all yours.
Great. And, uh, and John, uh, I'll help you with those, those furious notes. I know I gave you a mouthful there just a second ago. So happy to do a little bit of follow up myself. Um, thank you guys. Um, next up, we're going to have, uh, summer programs update. And a, we have our administrator for multilingual programs with us, Toshiko. Yes.
Hey, good afternoon. Um, Chair Colette, Superintendent Grodding, board members and staff and community members. Uh, my name is Toshiko Maurizio, Administrator for Multilingual Programs. And I have here, I hope they're in here. Um, we have our newest administrator that we just hired, our administrator for extended learning and, um, community engagement. Vanessa Davalos, who will soon be taking over everything summer school and community engagement. Are you here, Vanessa? See, okay, maybe. Um, we also have, um, Andy Robinson, who is our administrator, um, also an administrator in the multilingual department to help with the presentation. So let me just see if I could, um, share my screen here. Oh, can I get to sharing access? Sorry.
There you go, Toshiko. Thank you.
It's, let me, this bigger. So we are, um, here to provide an overview of what we currently have planned for summer programs this year. Just know that, um, we are still building the program. And so we won't have all of the specific details for each of the levels, but we can provide an overview and vision for this year's summer programs. Um, so this is what we will try to cover today in the time that we have. Uh, we will share lessons we learned from last year, share the vision for this year. Uh, we will share some information that we have around budget. And then Vanessa will share a bit about the leveled programs, elementary, middle and high. Um, Andy will share about the multilingual, um, department, uh, summer programs. I will talk about ESY briefly, and then the potential barriers that we will try to overcome um, for summer program. We will leave some time for questions at the end, but, um, feel free to interrupt us if you have a thought or question during the presentation, um, as well. So this is our, um, this is currently our summer team. It takes, um, there's a huge undertaking to plan for, um, for summer programs. And so we have a, a team and Vanessa was, is starting to take over and she will also be working with these teams. Um, we have our administrators, um, and we have hired a district coordinator. So these are teacher leaders in our district that is overseeing each of the leveled, um, programs. We have two high school district coordinators, um, two middle school district coordinators. And then we, uh, went with the, a three district coordinator for the elementary, um, programs, just because we have a lot more, uh, schools in that area. Um, and just know that, um, to plan for summer programs, you need all of these departments. And so we, uh, work collaboratively with all of the departments, um, facilities, maintenance, risk management, HR, nutrition, IT, business office. And of course we have T and L representatives that we, uh, meet regularly with, um, to plan for, uh, for summer school. Um, a- along with the district coordinators, we are also working on building our site coordinator team. So each of the schools will have a site coordinator. So we, as you can see, um, we're still hiring for those positions right now, but once they're named, we will definitely have a complete team to run summer school. So we, as you know, we, uh, we had a team last year that presented to you, um, very similarly to, um, to us now. Uh, they presented our plan, but then they also presented at the end on what are lesson, what were the lessons that we learned last year? So I just wanted to summarize that for you today. Um, we learned that with all that money that we received from ODE, we were able to provide a really good enriching, um, summer program last year. Um, and we had a lot of students, um, and families that were interested. Just at the elementary level alone, we had about 5,000 applications that were submitted. So we knew that there were families and students that really wanted to attend our summer programs. And we also learned last year that there were local businesses that wanted to support, um, Beaverton School District. We did utilize, um, local businesses to support the enrichment opportunities at the different levels. Um, we also learned that, um, classes across all comprehensive programs were full. Um, and the capacity of programs could not meet the demand. So we did have to turn away some of our students, um, last year. Um, centering courses around active project-based curriculum created joyful learning experiences, um, for students, especially at the middle school level. And so our middle school team is definitely planning to continue a lot of the hands-on, um, project-based experiences for students. The lessons learned last year, we, we need to make sure that summer school is free. We, it remains free for all students. Need to make sure that it's available to all students as well. Um, we also know that, like, like I mentioned, it takes a lot of collaboration and particularly for our department, for multilingual department, we need to make sure to collaborate and be in those meetings, um, at all levels. Um, just so that we make sure that we prevent the duplication of firts and programs. We learned that our students were resilient and connection with staff and other students was an important component of the program, especially coming off of, of the pandemic and remote learning. Um, this is something that we are looking into. Um, we need to take a hard look at how we support and properly compensate our classified employees so that we keep them coming back to support our, um, our programs. From the MLD, uh, we know that summer is an important opportunity. We learned this, that students are engaged in our programs. We know, we learned that we need to start, um, planning for summer programs really early as much as possible. So we're going to, Vanessa's going to make that happen next year. Um, staff shortage was a huge issue for us last year, so we're hoping to overcome that, um, barrier this year. Um, and this is huge for us, a lesson learned. Um, it's, summer school helps, but it cannot recover all mislearning from previous school years. And we must improve our support for students during the school year so that summer is a time for acceleration, enrichment, it's fun, and it's not looked at as remediation. Which definitely aligns with ODE Summer Learning Practice Guide and their vision for summer school this year. Um, that summer programs provide a unique opportunity to build relationships, spark joy and deepen natural curiosity that promotes learning, growth and success for every student. So our vision for summer school this year will definitely align with, um, ODE's, um, vision for, um, for summer programming. And we're going to start moving away from the traditional summer school to more of an equity-driven summer learning program. And this visual can be found in the ODE Summer Learning Guide, um, page three. So just some examples targeted only to those with academic need, but moving to accessible, um, equitable, diverse and inclusive summer programs. And then here's where you will see the deficit-based and remedial summer programming, the traditional summer programming to now strength-based and enriching. And then academic drill and skill to more well-rounded opportunities for students, project-based, hands-on. So we're going to try to take on the shift that ODE is recommending for a traditional summer school to more of an equity-driven summer learning program and try to implement that into our summer programs this year. We'll do our best. Um, so summer budget, it's always the big question, right? You always need to know how much money you have to run an effective summer program. And so, um, as you know, last year we received a lot of money and, um, we, Beaverton specifically, we received 13.2 million to run our summer programs. We didn't spend all of that money, but that's how much we received last year. Um, so at the state level, they distributed 250 million for, um, summer programs. Um, and they broke that down into K8. So K8 as a state received 90 million and then nine 12 received 72 million. We, what we know so far this year is that the legislator, legislature approved 150 million for summer extended learning, which is, if you can say it's 100 million less. Uh, we're still trying to figure out Beaverton's portion of that, but we think it's in the ballpark of around six to nine million. So we're going to plan according, um, according to those, um, to those numbers. Um, I'm going to turn it over to Vanessa right now. She's going to talk a bit about, um, all the different level programs. And I might just say, there's not a lot of detail on here, but we're still planning, um, we're still building it.
Thank you, Toshiko. And thank you so much for having me today. It is a pleasure to be here. Um, and I excite, I'm excited to present you at my first board meeting. I started in mid-March. So you know, I just went forward and was like, let me be a part of this. So I'm excited to be here in front of you and to offer you, you know, what exciting opportunities we are about to give our students. Um, and you know, we, we're going to continue to build upon these programs. So again, if you have any questions, please feel free to just go ahead and ask and we can answer what we can with what we have, what knowledge we have still. So we'll kind of start with the elementary program. Um, our elementary program, some of the logistics, we have 17 sites. How we determine those sites is first, again, um, meeting with all parties, transportation, IT, uh, facilities, making sure that our buildings are not under construction with like AHVAC or repiping. Um, so we took it down, um, based on that with what sites were available. And then, um, from there, we looked at the model that we had last year. So you'll see that we had district coordinators. And then we had, uh, site coordinators at each site. So we're going again with that hub model where you had multiple sites, um, for Camp Achieve for the elementary section. But then under some of those sites, you have feeder schools that are around those sites. So that is part of the 17 sites. So we're trying to then look across the system to make sure we're equitably providing programs, um, in all areas because we know our most underserved populations are everywhere. And not just, um, in, in schools. So in our title schools. So our tentative dates right now are July 5th through July 28th, Monday through Thursdays, four hours in person. And we're really, um, going to try to find out that, uh, intricate balance of, uh, integrating those core standards, that accelerating learning. Um, through inquiry-based learning that we really want students to have those foundational skills, um, with enrichment. So engaging those students and really doing hands-on activities to have authentic experiences for our kids. And then we have Kindy Academy. Um, there are, there's funding coming from just different resources, but I know that OD, I want OD, some of the OD funds to participate, to help our principals offer this Kindy Academy, not only for our title schools, but across our system. So we're looking into that with, um, building administrators. Um, when we're thinking about prioritizing students in partnership with our schools, um, because our schools are on the ground. Um, our teachers, our counselors, um, we're looking at those underserved populations, low SES, homelessness, students with disabilities. Um, students, um, uh, students of color. And then we're then looking at students with high numbers of RB, um, in our behavior, health and wellness referrals in our schools. Um, to really look at, um, those most in need. And then, you know, that last part is kind of allowing students across the system to be part of our elementary programs. Do you have any questions for elementary? Okay.
Karen?
Yeah. I know that when we look at the ODE funding, mostly for the kinder and elementary. Um, so it's new to me that they're going to be giving money to the other parts. Um, have they changed that now that they're giving funding for, not just for that coming, the ki- incoming, incoming kinders, but they're actually going to give us money for the other part too? Or is it a certain percentage of that money that has to go to kinder and then?
Are you talking for the ODE Summer Learning Grant?
Yeah.
They're going to break it down again, similarly to last year. Um, and I think Mike's here, so he can correct me if I'm wrong, but it'll be K8, it'll be nine 12. And I believe there's also like a childcare piece to that. There are And I think Mike's here, so he can correct me if I'm wrong, but it'll be K eight, it'll be nine twelve, and I believe there's also like a childcare piece to that, there are components of it. So we'll, they'll let us know what that amount is and will make sense of it to figure out what it means for, for Beaverton specifically. And then I believe there's still a match to that. So I think it's like a twenty, twenty-five percent match that we will have to put into summer programs.
Okay, thank you. It sounds like there will be some middle school programs as well then.
Yeah. And, and I think that, at least from feedback that we've gotten from multiple levels, there were some grant constraints on like enrichment for high school. So I, I'm looking now to kind of meet with the team to understand what those constraints are, what they might be. So as we plan to kind of offer these authentic experiences, not only for our elementary kids, but up to our high school kids, engage our kids to come into our schools that we have the, the money to do so with this grant.
Okay, yeah, I think that, that, I know you said elementary, questions about elementary, but my mind went to wow, we can do middle school.
Yeah.
Thinking about the healing that needs to happen for some of our middle schoolers and with all the behavior pieces that we're seeing.
Yeah.
Like thinking outside the box for some of the mental health and wellness, like just opportunities to be kids and have fun and just to be, do some healing during the summer so that they can recharge and come back and hopefully have a more positive, you know, and, and learning, a more learning experience, a more healthy learning experience, I guess I would say. For seventh and eighth graders or the eighth graders going into high school and ninth grade.
And I think, you know, the pandemic, that system, that systemic, those pre-existing conditions of inequities that have faced our, our schools and, and now got, coming out of the pandemic. I mean, that trauma is still going to come with our kids as we continue to work through this. So how can we offer a program that not only supports them during the summer, but supports them beyond the summer? And so they can carry these skills that was, was our normal into the new century.
Becky?
So let me make sure, is this just about elementary or all summer school?
Um, I'm going to, I'm going to go into middle school and high school.
Okay, so let me, so I'll just ask my elementary.
Yeah, go for it.
Well, welcome, welcome.
Thank you.
Way to jump right into the deep end of the pool. You're doing great. So on the Kindy Academy.
Yeah.
How are we going to identify? How, how is, how is that identification? How's that reach out done? Is it kindergarten roundup? Is it, is it, students are already in our pre-K? How, how will we identify the Kindy Academy?
You know, I think you labeled important parts that would be part of that process. And I think I really want to work closely with administrators and their communities to try to find effective ways to make sure we are targeting and getting to those families. We know our pre-K programs could offer, you know, that Kindy Academy, but we really want to do, you know, reach out in various ways with multiple languages. Working with multiple departments to make sure we get the, the kids to our schools, because this is, this can be our, maybe their first experience of being in our schools. And although it's a short experience, I think it's an essential experience for our kids to have, to feel that sense of belonging.
Karen?
That made me, Becky's question made me think about, you know, for some, for our S, high S E S schools, our kinders don't come to school till like the day of school starting. We don't, they don't find out till the, you know, a couple of days before, the week before. So I wonder how we can how we can, just put it in the back of our minds or somewhere in there that how will it look different possibly for some of our title schools? Would they have an early kinder academy for those that have already registered? And is there something we could do toward right before school starts or something, once school starts, just with that group? With parents or some kind of support so that those, those families that just register right before kinder starts or right at the beginning, still get some of those extra support set the other kids were able to get during the summer?
Agreed. And I will bring that, I'm working closely with building administrators. I'm actually going and presenting at their next meeting. So I want to make sure and kind of bring those things up. You know, we know not only our title schools need it, all of our schools need Kindy Academy. And what we know is that parent component is essential to get parents and families in our communities to be champions for our schools. So we will do everything we need to do to not only offer kind of an early program, but to make sure, to see where we can put money towards, you know, guiding those families that may come in later. We'll keep that in mind. Thank you. Okay, middle school. So with middle school, they will be offering programs at all middle schools. And again, they're really focusing on that accelerated learning and S E L experience, the well-being of children. And so their, their goal is to really have, you know, they believe, we believe all staff members and students are both teachers and learners, a collaborative experience. And what that looks like is that, you know, you have a well-rounded summer school. If you can go to the next slide, Toshiko, thank you. A well-rounded summer school experience with integrated academics and hands-on authentic experiences while making sure we're meeting the whole child and, and really looking at how we can be strength-based with students and build upon that to ensure that they are engaged and really feel a sense of belonging in our summer school programs. It is not separated from the regular school year. We want summer school to feel like we're going to school like any other day. But an even greater experience to get them intrigued and to want them, to get them to want to come back. And they put some pictures here for us. You have some smiles there, some collaborative work, and you know, those, those essential building skills, the C T skills, career, career technical skills. Any questions about middle school? I believe middle school is going to be, again, the fifteen days, four hours a day, Monday through Thursdays. Those are kind of the logistics for that, for middle school also. They're kind of aligned as of now, as we continue to work through other aspects such as transportation.
Becky?
I, I'm going to be really curious here, because I, I think a lot of the summer school last year were our families that they had not been in our buildings and they were just so curious what it was going to look like. So we had a lot of that going from fifth grade to sixth grade and from eighth grade to ninth grade. So I'm going to be anxious to see what kind of carryover we have. But with that incoming sixth grade, it would seem like that would be a really popular part of that, making that transition of that going from elementary to middle school. Also wondering, is this at all a place that we would introduce avid? In a atmosphere like this of just getting those students who have already been identified in elementary school, maybe on the, on the path?
It definitely could be, and I will share that with our district coordinators to make that, as well as to ensure that there is, to see if there is a kind of six point five experience like we have for our eight point five and our nine point five students.
Karen?
It makes, it fills my heart that we're going to have this for our middle schools, like all of our middle schools, because I think it's much needed. I'm wondering what learnings, and this is not necessarily a question you have to answer right now, but I, it would be good to check in what learnings we had about signing up for middle school, summer school from last year. So that it, we are doing it in the most equitable fashion and for our kids to sign up. I would say that it was, I, I experienced something with my own kid signing them up for middle school that we could just sign up and it was come, first come, first served. I was on the computer when it came out, I signed my kid up, but I don't know that she was the right kid. You know, like there's other kids that had higher needs. It wasn't clear to me. I just signed him up because it was something, and oh, that'd be great. They're going into, you know, sixth grade. So I think it, it would, it'll be, it would, and some other schools did it differently. So maybe kind of shoring up how kids are signing up so that it's equitable across our schools. And then it also made me think about, it was interesting to me that our multilingual department is in charge of this portion, like the summer school portion. Because it's really an instructional, not just our multilingual department, but it's like for all students. With that said, I appreciate, I think Toshiko mentioned, we want to make sure we have multilingual staff in each of these spaces so that we're providing a space for all multi, you know, multilingual students in every one of these spaces. So maybe that was the thinking behind it. And with that said, I know that we have some of our students that are migrant or multilingual students that are in E L D that would otherwise get, I guess, certain, we get a certain percentage of the E L D students that actually get spots, like they're in sped and there's like certain ways that you're figuring that out. And I know there weren't, even though we gave a certain number for our E L D students and migrant students, some districts have larger percentages of our E L D and migrant students in summer school. So as we move forward, I just, it could be, maybe you're talking about that later, maybe it's at the end, you know, or if you've already thought about through some of those pieces, it could be now or later, but.
Yeah, let me ask the multilingual department first, Karen. So we were helping and supporting. So I was tasked with the hiring and going through that hiring process to hire the administrator for extended learning and community engagement. And so I'm supporting the process, but Vanessa's role, she is actually directly under Jenny Hansman. And so she, that position is definitely K twelve and she will be taking over. I'm kind of like helping and supporting. And then when she's on board, she just started like a few weeks ago. So she's kind of getting, I'm getting used to everything and attending a lot of meetings. But yeah, that's a very, very good point, and it will definitely be district-wide, so. And including the family engagement. So the family engagement is not going to be just living with M L D, but it definitely will be K twelve.
Yeah, and I think we really, really do want to be intentional on how we are recruiting our students and who are, who we are serving in our programs, especially if we have limited staff that actually come, you know, are constrained on staffing it. And I think part of this position is kind of building those consistency system-wide. So everyone knows what's going on across our system of, in summer school and what's possible and how to get students part of that experience. So I want to be really intentional about that as we continue to consistently build these systems.
And I know that in some districts, they'll have like the summer school that everybody has access to. And then the migrant ed money and the E L D money go to add and not supplant. And so that's where I'm wondering, as we move forward in this work, like, how are we adding and not supplanting with our migrant ed or E L D money?
And Andy will talk about that. We'll talk about multilingual programs.
Thank you.
I just wanted to mention, so last year when we did our summer school program, part of the requirements were a minimum of half of the students needed to be special education eligible. Like an English language learner, part of migrant. So they got the priority of them. And then our staff, particularly at the middle school level, were highly active. So we had identified all, also all our top students who had been referred through behavioral health and wellness. And so they were targeted intentionally. However, we, in the end, we had kind of a lottery base after we did the outreach based on the number of students and slots we still had available. So there was a pretty targeted effort to make sure that those students who are, you know, historically underserved were their target of the programs. And then what was left over was open to other people, other students.
Thank you, Danielle, for that historical background. And then we have our high school experience. So again, with our high school, we're really looking to serve the whole child again, really that inclusive behavior, health, and wellness focus, the S E L focus. And to really just, again, what the pandemic has done to our students and our schools and the disconnect that we're currently facing. And so really bringing students back into this engaging experience and kind of building deep rooted in those relationships and community partnerships around them. And so again, when we look at creating those conditions for students to feel empowered, we're looking at that free to students, that transportation provided, that integrated and inclusive E L D and sped model of pushing in and then, you know, food, the basics that we need. And a kind of that well-rounded staff, what do we need to support the whole child? And that's counselors, social workers, bilingual facilitators, sped. And then we have support staff that are, again, a central part of the pro, a central part of the program, like instructional aids. And so again, and I think this goes across levels, our class sizes, we want to keep from fifteen to fifteen to twenty. Make sure that we're serving staff and offering professional, effective, valuable, professional development quality of life so that they come in and they're ready to serve our kids, as well as a teacher-friendly schedule and calendar. So just making sure we're not overwhelming our staff, but we're, but it's sustainable in making sure their priority is our students when they're serving our kids in our schools. And these are some of the programs, these are the programs the high school will be actually offering. And so you have, you know, that eight point five experience where students are incoming ninth graders. And so they're really coming in, kind of building those relationships, understanding the role as a student, community connections. What is, what the school culture is like. And then you have your nine and a half, which is our current ninth graders and really just keeping them engaged in our community, keeping those relationships kind of strong in developing their personal and academic skills. Again, meeting the whole child for, for those students. And then some of our credit bearing experiences, you know, designed for that engagement, inclusion, enrichment in mind. So they're basically, they can take, you know, kind of these classes that are more authentic and more hands-on, more inquiry-based learning. And then you have your completed, which is available for students with eligible eyes, but those programs are a little more targeted, target-based in terms of what class they need to complete. And so I would imagine that those kind of needs change at each high school. Any questions about high school?
Becky?
So I'm not quite sure if Vanessa, you're going to have the answer, but this kind of leads back to our last conversation about course recovery. So I, I had the opportunity to spend a day at summer school this, this last year, and I, I was just amazed. And it was, it was just great how engaged the students were, especially like I said before, they hadn't been in school for a while. So a lot of them, they were just glad to get around, you know, people in a structure and, and all that. I loved the enrichment that, like you said, the inquiry, all of those sort of things. But now going back to the course recovery at the high school level and us having teacher burnout. People need to, you know, where we're going to get the right folks. And I know you're got, you're getting a much bigger lead on this to my question. How important is it going to be that the teachers that provided the eyes or the ends are the ones working with the high school students to get them the course recovery? Or is it, it, it doesn't matter because it's proficiency-based, standard-based, whoever's there can help them. It's not going to matter that it is and then, you know, an extension of what the students have already had at their given high school to get the course recovery?
Becky, that is a very good question. And, and I would start with first and foremost, we want the staff there who know our, who know our kids, right? So we want staff that are currently in the building that are offering these classes. In terms of recruitment of that, I want to check in with the high school team to see what we are doing to make sure that these, to energize this staff to be part of our summer school experience for our students, because I, I agree with you in the importance of that.
And then my other thing, and I know you addressed it in this a little bit here, about the, I, I worry about the students who need it the most are not going to be able to fit in that nice box of coming the four hours on the days that we offer it. And so I'm wondering, I, and I know, Toshiko, you, I know that I'm not trying to jump ahead because you've got a lot of things you're still thinking of. But I'm just hoping that we are thinking of other ways to meet those needs rather than those things. Because I know a lot of these students have summer jobs or they're taking care of other siblings or whatever the case may be, that we're just trying to find other ways to get them so that they can get that, that, that course recovery.
Yeah, and we do have a slide on potential barriers that we're, we're still working through, but I will talk about, a bit about that.
Okay, sorry, sorry, sorry about that. Jumping ahead, sorry.
It's okay. And Andy, did you want to add anything regarding the proficiency base and Becky's question specific to the learning targets and making sure that the teachers are the ones that are delivering that? I know that you dealt a lot with the summer programs last year.
Yeah, thanks, Toshiko. And Vanessa is right. We do want the, the staff members who know the students best, the ones Yeah, thanks, Toshiko. And Vanessa is right. We do want the, the staff members who know the students best, the ones teaching them. Uh, but if that's not possible, then I know in the past we have had teachers, as long as they're licensed in those areas, to be helping students recover those missed courses. And that's, and when we get to multilingual programs, that's part of our supplemental model for high school learning target recovery.
And Becky, I know we're, we're, you know, we're in the beginning of recruiting teachers, and this is uh, cross elementary, middle school and high school. But I want to really be thinking about um, people who are, staff who have already reached out to me, who are energized to serve our programs. Um, yes, we can expect teacher burnout, and there's a lot of things happening. But what quality of life? What opportunities can we provide these teachers coming into our summer school experience to be here for our kids? And, and to really be a part of this. And so know that I have energized people reaching out to me already saying, I want to be a part of this. I was a part of this last year. And so as we continue to, to build these programs, know that there are people in our district ready to step up for our kids and ready to do the work. And we're gonna start there at least with, with that energy.
And, and Vanessa, I know it. I saw these teachers, even as tired as they were last year, it's a whole different atmosphere. It's a whole, I mean, I loved, you could just feel the energy and you could feel it was teachers that were, that were really making, you know, learning fun. And because it is uh, inquiry-based and it was different. So I, I'm not saying that I know that you're, you know, pulling people against their will. I the folks that, that most want to be there. I just, I just know that we weren't able to um, meet all of the needs because we didn't have enough. So I was, I was just trying to think how we were gonna think out of the box on that.
Well, thank you. And we'll continue to work with the team to continue to do that. Because, you know, we do want to offer to as many kids as we can. I know last year we served well, over two thousand kids. I mean, that's, that's amazing. And I'm hoping to get a number so we can continue to serve more. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Okay, hello, everyone. I'm Andy. I'm gonna be speaking about our multilingual programs. Before I do, I just want to say, Vanessa, I shared your optimism. We at the multilingual department have been getting uh, requests from teachers ever since January, that far back, asking about what summer programs we're gonna be offering because they, they want to be involved. So the multilingual department really has a, has a dual-purpose role in summer planning and implementation. The first, as was already talked about a little bit before, is to help guide the development of these district programs that Toshiko and Vanessa have been talking about so far. Uh, guide them so that they're accessible and meaningful to multilingual learners in our district. And so we have staff members that are on those planning teams. They'll be providing professional development as well. The second part, the second role is that our department provides uh, supplemental programs. So in addition to these programs that we've been talking about today, and I know several of you have been asking about these, how are we filling those gaps? What are we doing beyond these district programs? And in particular, for students in the English learner, the migrant ed and the American Indian Alaska Native programs. And just as a reminder, the multilingual department gets funds from their title funds. And so they're used for supplemental programs. Uh, and that's why students in these groups do need access to all these other programs in addition to the supplemental ones that we're going to be offering. So what are the supplemental programs we're offering? We're still developing them, but this is our best. This is what we believe we're gonna be offering at this time. Some of them are more developed than others. Some are ready to go, some are still in development. So you all know, we have dual-language programs in our district, uh, and so students are studying certain amount of time during the day in Spanish. We want to continue that education and experience through the summer. And so we are going to be, we're gonna have a, a dual-language strand in one or more elementary schools, depending on how much staff we can recruit, and also in middle schools as well. High school learning target recovery and new credit. This is uh, I started talking about this earlier. So as was brought up, some of our high school students cannot attend the district's morning program. Uh, they may not have the four hours, they may be working a job, they may be um, providing childcare at home, a number of issues. And so what the multilingual department will offer is an afternoon, early evening opportunity for students to recover learning targets. Uh, and so they won't be taking a whole course. It won't be like taking a whole new semester over again. Instead, the teachers working with the students will look back on their entire high school experience and look at all the learning targets. They were proficient in and ones that they were not. And then make a plan to identify which ones they're going to recover that summer. So potentially students can make up multiple course credits, uh, eyes and ends. And we piloted this last year and it was very successful. We had uh, students recover the equivalent of fifty-eight, I think it was fifty-eight semester courses. So very successful. We want to continue that model. Uh, we may offer some new credit. Also, we've done in the past, very popular, we've offered game design and computer coding. So some real high-interest ones. So that, there's some opportunities that aren't just uh, recovering credits. We'll also offer newcomer programs, elementary, middle and high school. Some of those will be integrated into the district programs. Uh, some of them may be pull out depending on what we identify the needs of those students are. High school student, high school newcomer students typically need more support with math. Uh, so we'll likely offer a newcomer uh, algebra AGS one course or AGS two, if that's what they need. We'll offer a migrant pre-K program. That's really required by our migrant ed program. It's one of our four uh, migrant ed goals. We're also gonna offer tutoring and academic coaching, elementary, middle and high school. So uh, students get that additional tutoring to keep them active and engaged all summer. Uh, and coaches too. So for example, high school students that are working in credit recovery will assign them, if they want one, a coach who can inspire them, motivate them, help them get their, get their work done, help them tutor if they're comfortable in those content areas. Something new we're trying this year with our, our tutoring is instead of having it at a district facility, we are experimenting, having them out in the community. So we're gonna offer one, I think it's two days a week at the Beverden City Library and two days a week at the uh, Heritage Village Community Center. Because we know so many of our migrant students and families live in that neighborhood, so it might be more accessible to them. Um, in addition, we'll offer American Indian Alaska Native Lifeways Camp, which we've done every year. It's an opportunity for those students to learn about uh, native heritage, native culture, language. And then also there may be an additional credit recovery opportunity, really tailored for students in that program. We're still developing that. We have a wonderful relationship with THPRD. And now we've, this was the first year we've offered enrichment to migrant students. Uh, it's fall, spring and summer. And we found the students are highly engaged. It's just a great um, additional opportunity and experience for students. We know how important that is. So uh, we plan to offer that again. It's, it's a wonderful partnership. It's a win-win for them and for our families. And then also, we are going to work on more family workshops this summer. We think we're gonna start with our newcomer programs and really do some backwards planning, identify what do our newcomer families need to learn, want to learn. And then let's provide that uh, to really prepare them to start the school year. Uh, so that, you know, September, when everyone comes back, it can be very busy and very overwhelming for families that are new. And so we want to try to front-load as much of that learning as possible. So for example, how to download Parent Square onto their phones, uh, how to enroll your child. Uh, how to, how does the American school system work? Uh, where you can get language interpretation services. Some of that is basic services to get them um, going early. So that's what we're thinking for supplemental programs, both academic and more on the social support side. Any questions about multilingual programs or, or feedback for us?
Think you're good, Andy.
Okay, thank you.
Right, so I'll go ahead and um, talk about um, ESY. And I see Danielle's here, so feel free to jump in, Danielle, if you have any, anything else to add. Just wanted to share that um, uh, we will be having ESY, it's a requirement. So it's extended school year. Um, and these are for stu- and recovery services. It's for students that qualify for um, special education services. So these are the two programs that our, our special department will be providing. Um, what, the first is ESY, and that's to provide instruction and support to students who demonstrate regression and a lack of recruitment on IEP goals. So I'm assuming that a lot of the teachers will go, be going over some of those IEP goals and identifying the students that um, they um, they will invite to ESY. And the recovery services, these are, this is the criteria that they're using. Um, so it's students who did not make progress in IEP goals over the course um, of the pandemic and did not receive services last year. And then those um, that during the school year may be eligible to attend the summer program. Um, again, looking at those um, IEP goals. And both of these programs will run, um, will take place at Hazeldale Elementary. And their dates um, somewhat align with ours. It's July fifth to the twenty-first. Danielle, do you want to add anything else to ESY? Any questions around ESY?
Um, how many slots are there for these programs for the ESY and then also for the multilingual department, like?
Well, so ESY and recovery services is all based on the students' IEP. So there isn't a certain number of slots. Um, the staffing is based on the students who qualify. So we sometimes, you know, you, on average, we have about a hundred and twenty students who attend extended school year. These are all students who are on IEPs. And it's been tur- determined by their IEP team that they require extent, ESY services.
So there's like a rubric of some sort of, yeah, so needs. And I like, hey, this, these, these meet enough of the requirements to say we need to keep them for some, or they, they were.
What happens is they all have I, all the students have IEP goals. And so um, prior to a break and instruction like prior to um, winter break or spring break or summer break. Um, they, the, the learning specialist assess the students on kind of where they are in terms of performing towards meeting their goals. Then they go on um, break and then they come back after a portion of time. And they reassess the student to determine if they've made, um, if they've lost any skills. And then if they have lost skills, so they've seen, shown regression, then they test them again after another period to see if they've been able to recoup the skills. So it's a very like specific formula in terms of looking at, you have to regress on the skills that you've had. And you have to have an inability to recoup those skills after you've returned to school.
Cool. But what about for the multilingual?
So go ahead, Andy.
Yeah, for a multilingual program, so similar to last summer, uh, because so much funding is being provided to the district for these uh, elementary, middle and high school programs. Our goal is to have English learners, students in the migrant ed program, as many as possible, if not all, that want to participate, be a part of those programs. Uh, I know Vanessa's working with those different level planning teams to set the, what are the criteria for that first tier of uh, student registration, like Daniel was um, sharing about how it worked last year. In terms of the supplemental programs the multilingual department will offer, we don't anticipate, we anticipate that any English learner, student in migrant ed program, AIAN program will have a spot. Uh, because so much funding is being provided by the district. So uh, we're confident that we'll be able to serve all the students in the MLD programs.
Sorry, with the funding from the district, meaning our own in um, general ed budget that comes for our ELD students, correct?
Yeah, the general ed budget, the ODE funding and.
ODE funding.
Yeah.
Yeah, not the ADM.
The point five?
No, uh, the ADM, that's, that's for uh,
It's separate.
During this, it's separate. Yeah, we're talking about the ODE Summer Learning Grant, um, in the millions. We're hoping that we'll get, you know, between six to nine million dollars. So where the idea is to utilize those funds first, serve a lot of our multilingual learners in the general program. And then use our title grant funds that we receive for migrant and for Title III on the supplemental part. And so because we don't have to use that um, for summer, um, to support the students in those, we can, we have a lot more to use now for. And we can accept a lot more students um, in our supplemental program, if that makes sense. So the grant funds, we have both grant funds, one from ODE and one from Title programs, and we'll be able to utilize a lot of them to accept more students.
Great, thank you.
Becky and then Susan.
Um, this, this, kind of, this is more just a logistics question, and this is such good information. I, I, I've never heard all of these steps before on the board. And I, I really appreciate knowing all of the different things that we are doing as a board to share with our community. Um, my question is the logistics, to get the students to Hazeldale that they're on, and I, I assume they come from all over the district. Do we provide transportation?
Yes, we do. And we, um, so our, we've been operating, it's required by law to offer ESY. And so we've been offering this program forever. But we rotate the school sites every year. Um, because we also have to look at um, the impact on the school for cleaning. And, and so, and we do them at elementary schools because they have a playground. And, and it really is a K-12 program. So if you have never been to our ESY program, I highly recommend you come and visit. You get to see the wide range of students we serve in our special education department, all in one school like Hazeldale.
Susan?
So my question is more about the, it's still a logistics question in terms of the timeline. The summer school offering goes through July twenty-eighth, and I noticed that the supplemental um, school is only through July twenty-first. And I was just wondering why the time was less.
Are you talking, oh, and are you talking about the multilingual?
No, I was looking at the uh, supplemental for um, s- special ed. It looked like it was.
Ending on the twenty-first.
Yeah, so our program runs for three weeks, and that's pretty much how it's been set up. We're not getting specifically supplemental funding for ESY. So it's just our regular program that we do every year. Our students in special education will have access to the district summer school if they want to attend that. But our ESY program is just always operated off of three weeks and it's funded out of our general fund.
Thank you for that.
We will have some extra students who do access that because of some of the funding around recovery services. Um, so there are occasionally that, like, well, this year, there'll be some students, this year and last year, there are some students who will attend the extended school year program that don't actually meet the criteria for ESY. But it's because they fall under the Recovery Services Act um, aspect. And then next year, it'll completely go back to the normal setting.
Karen?
I just, when you were just talking about that, um, it made me, Danielle, it made me think about credit recovery for our, some of our students on IEPs. So would, they would, is there a credit recovery in your program as well? Or is it, you'd have to go to the high school summer program to do the credit recovery. You're doing more of the IEP goals that weren't met, but not necessarily the standards.
Correct.
They have to pass a class. Okay.
Yep.
So as you're planning for, as we're planning for summer school, you know, there's always, we always have to anticipate what the barriers are and um, and try to figure out how to overcome these barriers. So that um, as a lot of you guys are asking questions about access, right? How are we gonna get students to these programs and who are we going to target? Um, and so we identified some of the potential barriers here. But if you guys have, if you guys see anything else at your thirty-foot level, you can, you know, share it with us and we'll try to figure out how to, um, between Vanessa and ourselves, we'll try to figure out how to overcome those barriers. But some of you mentioned, transportation is gonna be a huge barrier with a lot of um, bus driver shortages that we've experienced this year. We are, are also anticipating some shortages um, in the summer. So Vanessa's gonna be working with Transportation Department uh, on how to ensure that when we design the program for all the different levels and for the number of schools that we have, that we have capacity to be able to transport our students to these programs and whatever programs we, we offer. So that's gonna, that's a barrier, but we're gonna be working through that. Another thing is capacity. We don't, we know that we have a lot of teachers that are interested in our, in our summer programs this year. But we need to make sure we have enough to support all the different types of programs that we want to offer. And so we did talk about tiering, um, the students that um, we're going to be targeting for, for summer programs. So, you know, tier one, how do we make sure that all of our underserved populations first get into the program? So whether they are in a hub school in the north end or um, you know, in a title program. But if they are considered one of the um, tier one students, that they would get, um, they would get into the program. And then maybe tier two, um, looking at high, uh, students with um, high BHNW referrals. Um, that could be our tier two, especially since um, summer programs, we're really looking at targeting SEL and making sure. and making sure there's enrichment opportunities for students. And we just know that for a lot of our students that struggle with that, that summertime is a really good time to kind of close some of those gaps for students. And then maybe a tier three is those that just want to be in summer school for enrichment purposes. So we are still trying to refine our tiering system for, for the access part and making sure to put our equity hat on. And making sure that all of our students that really need to be in summer programs get that opportunity. And then we know that a barrier is that some of our families and kind of you mentioned some of that, right? Like, how are they going to know about the, the summer program and what we're offering? And so we're looking at brainstorming ways to get the information out. I know that our elementary principals are saying, if you have the information out before conferences that are coming up right now, we could at least get the word out during conferences so that families, if they have that flyer, they can be looking out for summer school. And making sure that they know how to, to apply for it if it's an open application process. And then always making sure that we have all of that translated in all the different languages so it's accessible. So the information out, using all of our communication resources that we have to make sure that the information is received in a language they understand and in a timely manner as well. And then Karen, you mentioned about, you know, pre K, making sure that we also have a deadline to, to have students that where families come in later in the summer or they enroll later in the summer, but giving them an opportunity for, for kindergarten academy also. So that, those are just some things that we're going to be looking at. And then I think Becky, you mentioned students that may need to work to support families. And Andy mentioned some of the things that multilingual department will be doing to, to offset that and to support the students that may, may have to work during the day. But that might be, that's going to be a huge barrier for a lot of our students, especially our high school students that have to work to support families. So we know that this is a barrier and we're brainstorming other ways that we can support students that may have to work. And then we know that childcare is going to be an issue for a lot of our families that have to work several jobs and might have high school students that might have to care for the younger siblings, right? If they're not engaged in, in summer school. So we'll be exploring opportunities with administrators to see what options there are for childcare. So these are some of the potential barriers that our team came up with. And if there are, if there's anything else that you see from your level, let us know, or if you have any questions, I think we are, yeah.
Karen.
Something that I haven't seen yet, and that's the P D and the coaching for our staff. So when we have our summer programs and we bring in our highest need students. Some of our staff might need some training on how to support students with high behavioral needs or high, you know, spend needs or how to best meet their I A P needs and goals. Or E L D students and how to work with multilingual students. And so I, I see this as an opportunity that would be something to think about, like, what is that infusion of professional development for them and how are we coaching them through, coaching them up during the summer school? And then the second part was thinking about our support systems and planning. So as I think about our middle schools and the struggles that have happened this year, I see some schools that have really amazing systems have in place at the middle school, have had a bit more success in my, in my view of how, how students are being supported when there's crises that happen. And so I'm wondering if there's, this might be an opportunity for our middle schools to think outside the box and revamp their middle school systems and try it out with a smaller group of students during the summer, like their support systems and other pieces. So this could be a really good opportunity if the middle schools, it could be every group, but like, could come together to think about what support systems, what's been working this year and what things they want to try out for next year to improve. And it could be, you know, if, if not, we're going to continue some of the same behavior pieces, but just with a smaller group of students, issues that we've had. So there's a lot of opportunity here for professional development and the revamping of some of our, our systems.
Yep, great idea. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Okay, well, thank you so much. That was an amazing in-depth report. I'm so excited to see where we are at this summer and to hear about these programs. And we look forward to hearing about a lot of amazing learning that's going to be happening come September. So, or I should say, in September, after you guys have done these amazing programs over the summer. So thank you so much. I think what we're going to do now is we're going to take a quick 10 minute break. And then we will come back at 5:05 and begin with our student discipline report. And then after that, we'll take the meal break after that report is over. But just give everybody 10 minutes here as we've been going for about two hours. And when we come back, we'll be ready for the discipline report.
When we look at student discipline data and the strategies that need to be put into place, we always, as usual, look at the equity lens. And we are consistent in making sure that we follow these questions. Whose voice is and isn't represented in this decision? Who does this decision benefit or burden? Is this decision in alignment with the B S D equity policy? And does this decision close or widen the access opportunity and expectation gaps? This report also addresses what has kept us going through the last past year. Our agenda today, next slide. Oops, before that is our vision that we've talked about all year is a safe, engaging and consistent in-person full-time experience for all students and staff. Next slide. So our agenda for today is first off, Patrick and Ken will be sharing an overview of how we respond to student behavior in our schools. After that, we'll have Danielle and she will talk about the importance of the role of the behavioral health and wellness teams. As you know, they've been an integral part of what we're doing in terms of student discipline in our schools. After that, both Danielle and Ken will talk about updates to the student and family handbook. Followed by John Bridges, who will talk about semester one discipline data. We are hoping that at that time, we will have time for questions and answers. And so please keep your answers, write them down, ask them at the end. We are hoping that we're, we're leaving enough time for that. But also, please understand that we will not be answering specific questions about a certain school, but we'd be happy to answer them offline. So keep those on another piece of paper and send those questions to me and I'll make sure that those will get answered. Today is to give you an overall view of student discipline across all of our schools. So we'll go ahead and get started. Next slide.
Right, next slide, please. All right, good evening, Chair Colette, School Board, Superintendent Grouting. Thank you so much for having us here this evening. Looking forward to sharing with you some of our key practices we have to help support students in our school. And Ken and I are going to start off the presentation night, sharing with you our foundational practices. And then sort of a broad view of our proactive approaches to discipline and behavior. And as well as some of our approaches that we use when there is a need for some intervention. So we're going to start here with some of our foundational practices. The use of equitable outcomes and student-centered practices is always at the core of our work for each and every child every day. We really do K 12, pre K 12, proactively teach behavioral expectations. And that happens across the school day in a wide variety of ways. And not just at the beginning of a school year, but all the way across the school year. And, you know, we are truly committed to knowing the whole child. And that means for us is knowing each child as a learner, as a community member, as a social emotional being. And we know that that is absolutely critical. And we also know that every single kid comes to school with their own gifts, their own geniuses, their own assets. And when we know these and we believe in those and we can meet those, then we know that we're in a better place to meet all aspects of their needs within that learning environment. We also really spend a lot of time and emphasize both preventative and proactive strategies. And that means everything from, like I said, teaching those behavior expectations, focusing on problem solving and having restoration conversations whenever there is that need, when there's been some issue within the school. Ken?
Yeah, good evening. We also believe that relationships are at the heart of our work and those relationships are with our students, with their families and with our staff. And so the importance of community and relationships is a central value that we teach. And we expect our, our building leaders to cultivate in their school communities. We know that relationships must be built, but at times they must also be restored. So we actively engage in, in building those skills in our building leaders and in, in our teaching staff and in our classified staff that wrap around students. We believe that context matters. And by that, we mean the context for learning, which also sometimes becomes the context for learning about behavior. And that as we are building skills in our adults, the importance of the context of keeping that student-centered focus that Patrick started us out with really becomes something that is, is part of our proactive work. And we believe that non-exclusion. And we believe that non-exclusion should always be our first response. So, we try to maintain relationship. We try to balance the needs for safety with the need for students to access their education in the classroom setting and to minimize disruptions to that by being thoughtful. As we're moving into-
Oh, Ken, you went one slide too far.
Yeah, it was hung up on me and I got really excited and went too far. I apologize. Besides our foundational practices, we're now going to talk about proactive approaches. And proactive things would be things we would do in anticipation that student behavior is going to show up, and that we need to be thoughtful and systematic about how we approach that. So, every school has a student conduct plan, and that is a shared understanding of how the school will teach students the expected behaviors, and how the school community will react when student conduct is a problem. We also engage in collective learning around student behavior. So, this would be about having shared understandings of strategies to engage learners positively, and how to redirect behavior when that behavior is problematic. Simple strategies like making sure that people are working with students and maintaining their dignity and respect for the child, and doing things to coach students in ways that are not public but more private. Those would be examples of work that's going on in our buildings. And we also believe that, once again, knowing every child as a learner and as a community member is an important and integral support we provide to create the capacity for students to regulate their own behaviors and to actively participate in learning. Patrick, go ahead.
And key to that, I mean, we spend a lot of time really knowing and understanding each child, but we also have to know and understand our own selves, our own biases, or as in the CFI training talks about that inside-out work. And that equity truly is our collective work and learning. It is at the heart of really what we're engaged with, not just as it comes to discipline, but when it comes to how kids learn and how kids interact with school and how they engage in the learning environment. We also really try to create structures and systems to teach skills to our students. And as you're going to hear from Danielle later, our Behavior, Health, and Wellness Teams are really critical to that work. Our role of counselors, the role at the elementary level as student success coaches, the role that social workers, pre-K-12, has all been so important as we've embedded them in our work this year, and it has really helped us support kids, especially as they have transitioned back from being out due to the pandemic. We also know that when we teach those skills, and we do it in a variety of ways. We do it through, examples might be when we confer with kids during a readers' or writers' workshop. At elementary, it might happen in morning meetings. At secondary, it advisory periods. It's through a differentiated instruction and curriculum, our social emotional lessons, giving opportunities for student leadership. It's not just discipline when there's an issue. It's how do we teach it and create a community where people are taking care of each other? And we know that parents, as Ken said, are critical partners in that work with us. Next slide, Ken. We also know that there are times when there is a need to intervene with students due to a variety of circumstances. And when we think about our intervention approaches, oftentimes Ken and I were talking about this. This is almost thinking about it as our in-the-moment work. So, when there's an issue, what do we do and how do we respond? Our approach to intervention and support for discipline is based on a leveled approach, which you can find in the Student Code of Conduct, which is embedded in the Student and Family Handbook. That, within there, there's four levels of support, and that guidance describes behaviors and gives the opportunity for leaders a range of responses and potential consequences related to that student behavior. And as Ken mentioned earlier, each situation is looked at within the context of the severity, student need, and all the factors that may be involved in any given situation. And when there is an issue, we also believe that we have to focus on restorative practices. And by thinking about how do kids come together and restore and mend and heal when need, and critical to that is maintaining that safe and productive learning environment for all of our kids. Ken?
Right. Right, and as we approach those situations, restoring relationships sometimes might mean that a student does need an opportunity to take a break. And so, sometimes we will see some practices for coaching, and exclusion is short-term. Ultimately, our goal, whether it's a small event like the one I just described or something more significant, our goal is that we are equipping students with the ability to return to the learning environment and with the capacity to restore those relationships. Our decisions to exclude students should be seen as a last resort in our work with principals. We help them to develop that stance and to be thoughtful about how to implement the need for balancing the needs of the individual with the needs of the community. And parents and families, again, even at these difficult times, they are critical partners in supporting student behavior. So, we make sure we take time to help them along to understand what has occurred, to help them understand what we're doing to address those concerns, and what we will do in the future to prevent the likelihood of that happening once again. So, this is our foundational work that supports all of our work around student behavior. And now we'll be moving to Danielle, who's going to talk to us about Behavioral Health and Wellness Teams.
Good evening, everyone. Good to see you again. So, the work that our Student Services Department really focuses on is one, prevention. And then the second part is intervention following an incident that's taken place. But our hope is always to prevent any kind of incidents that do happen. But then we know that we want to help support the students and the staff and the family following an incident because our students are still coming to school. They're still going to be there. And so, we want that to be at a place where our students feel supported, our staff do as well, and our families have the tools to support their children at home. So, some of the things that we've really focused on over the last two years is really this idea of tiered intervention. So, one of the things we've done is, you know, as you know, you've heard a lot about our BH&amp;W teams. But one of the things that's a little bit different that we've really implemented this year is, you know, we have the teams at all schools, but we're also doing a quarterly data review. So, through their referral process of students coming through, we're giving the data back to the schools. We're working with Dr. Bridges on that, giving it back to the schools and giving them targeted questions that they can ask about their school and what they're seeing in the information that's there. Because sometimes when we're in the work, it's super busy, and it's hard to piecemeal out and see kind of that bigger picture. So, what we're trying to do is then synthesize that information and give them that opportunity to take a look at what their school profile looks like. They're actually getting ready to get a set of data this week. Additionally, we have really detailed out the roles and responsibilities of the people on these teams, and then looking at our tiered supports, so really looking at that universal whole-school support. Because we know that just like language arts and math and social sciences and science are really integral and important for students, we also know that teaching character traits, how to handle feeling dysregulated is really key. So, we have the whole class options where we're teaching those materials. We also have our student success coaches and our school support specialist coaching teachers on how to build that school community. And then we build into our Tier Two and Tier Three supports. So, really, as we're looking, if we're having students who are, you know, having consequences through the disciplinary process, we definitely want them also routed through our BH&amp;W team because we know that there's a reason for the misbehavior, and we want to try to get to the bottom of what that causes so that we can kind of treat that issue to prevent any further escalation or other further problems. So, we have a variety of different interventions that we're including from small group facilitation, individual meetings, wellness rooms, behavior intervention plans. We have staff who have all been trained on restorative conferencing, beefing up our attendance interventions. And then again, we have these very robust teams around student threat assessment, sexual incident response, and safety planning for suicidal ideation, where we partner with the county, DHS, law enforcement, to really kind of wrap around our students. And a lot of times what we're seeing is the students who are coming through our disciplinary process. We are also routing them through our STAT and SERP processes as well, which then involves the county, county mental health or DHS or law enforcement to really have a conversation about what might be going on for the student outside and inside school. Next slide, please. So, this here, I'm not going to go through this, but this is really kind of the robust amount of training that we are doing this year that we have rolled out for our Behavioral Health and Wellness Team. So, I wanted you guys to have access to that so you could see what trainings have been required for people, what we've been offering. So, it has been, we've actually been partnering, we were able to get some grants from the county, from Washington County Behavioral Health to help assist with paying for these trainings. And really, this focus on restorative practices, and so how we're repairing harm after an incident. And when we talk about discipline, there's a lot of things that happen that cause harm, right? So, there could be a staff member who feels harmed. We have the student who might have been either kind of the person who exhibited the misbehavior or those who were the recipient of the misbehavior. And so, it's really working through those pieces so we can come back and heal and help the students heal. And then our staff as well, because one of the things we know is with staff, it's really important for them to understand why things might be happening with a student so that they can build compassion and empathy as well so that it's not just, you know, as we understand more about what's going on with a student or their family, it helps us be able to say, how can I better help them in my classroom? So, all of these pieces are just for your reference about PD that we're offering to build a more responsive system of staff to help with our prevention of behavioral incidents that might occur. Next slide, please. Again, what I've talked to you about this as well, this, you know, this is the first time in BSD history where we've done a Behavioral Health and Wellness adoption, right? Like, we've had piecemeals here and there. Someone's like, oh, this program looks really good. We're going to try that. We didn't really use equity lens or a, looking at a trauma-informed anti-racist approach, looking at those materials. And so, that's really what we're diving in now. And then with that, we actually have some pilots going on actively. And one of them is we're piloting a universal screener that starts at fourth grade on for mental health factors to help so that we can maybe identify students and get them the supports they need before we're reacting after an incident has occurred. And then additionally, several different curricular-type materials that we're trialing at the elementary and middle and high school for implementation for the fall. Next slide, please. So, our plan for professional development for our staff, so as we look at discipline, discipline is really that final outcome of an incident that happened. And we really need to be investing our own time in that prevention to limit the number of students who are having to get to that Level Four of kind of the discipline piece. But we also want to make sure that following discipline, that we're responsive to those students as well. So, for this coming year, we're going to continue our PD cycle that we've been doing with our BH&amp;W staff. But we're actually, we're adding the addition of the BH&amp;W adoption. So, that will impact all staff around how we're looking at student needs, student trauma, their experiences. And then we are also partnering with Beaverton Police Department in Washington County to help have them have access to our mental health and restorative practices trainings so they can see from that more restorative instead of punitive lens of what we are trying to do within our schools. And then I just wanted to, since I had this opportunity, I did want to give you some data. So, just like we will look at our discipline data, also looking at where our students are. So, something to know is, you know, as of today, we've completed 646 suicide screens. And that's an increase of 243 screenings at the same time two years ago prior to the pandemic happening. So, we are definitely seeing a lot more suicidal ideation with our students, which is also, we see connected to the number of referrals that we have. We have, you know, 5,700 referrals to our teams. And so, when we look at that, we're looking at this huge increase of kids who are needing another level of support and a team to wrap around them. But we also know with that, we're seeing, you know, larger misbehavior, which, and some of it, you know, frightening where you have to respond for the, you know, health and safety of students, which at some points becomes exclusionary, and so we're trying really hard to avoid that. All right, so with that, then Ken and I get to shift into our Student and Family Handbook. And this conversation really dovetails to discipline because we're going to talk about substance use. So, one of the things I want to, for language, we really talk about now, we talk about drug, you know, alcohol and dangerous drug use instead of saying abuse. So, the language has changed in, you know, kind of out in the substance use world. And so, they've moved away from abuse and talking about use. And so, one of the things we find in our discipline and exclusionary discipline is the high number of students who are suspended or expelled as a result of something related to a substance use incident. So, it might be alcohol or might be drugs, but there's definitely something there that is contributing to that. So, one of the things we found in our practice and in our Student Family Handbook is we had very, we quickly moved to punitive responses for substance use within our schools. And it was really looking at students, when they had an initial offense, their parents were expected to pay and go and get a drug and alcohol assessment. And if the parents did not do that, the student would be expelled or could be expelled. And then they also needed to complete a diversion program. So, what we did to reduce some of those barriers this year is we're actually contracting with LifeWorks Northwest. And so, students no longer, their parents no longer have to get the assessment for them. The district is paying for that assessment. They're actually getting there. So, it's avoiding kids who are expelled as a result of not having an assessment. So, we're providing that for them. And then for the second semester, we made some adjustments to our process. Ken, do you want to talk a little bit about those changes, or I can keep going?
No, I'm happy to talk about that. Danielle, you really described the dilemma we have that clearly, especially among younger people, that use of alcohol and dangerous drugs on our school campuses is a concern we have. But our prior policy made it clear that in order to get assistance or support, that we were compelling administrators to move to expel the child. And what we have stated about the importance of relationships and about the importance of avoiding exclusion, it seemed to lack integrity, would be the feedback that we had from our school administrators. I also want to acknowledge Beth Merrill, who's a teacher at Sunset, and students from her class last spring that did research and advocated to our superintendent and our board, and made it really clear that based on research, our approach was really not working, and that we could see racial patterns and exclusion around the code of dangerous drugs and the code of alcohol. So, our stance is one that's based on the work that Danielle was describing with our Behavioral Health and Wellness Teams. And at the first or second incident at a level, our stance is that the exclusion from school is separated from a stance of offering assessments, offering support, having the Behavioral Health and Wellness Team wrap around this student and this family. And it is not appropriate for schools to be expelling students who are manifesting with these behaviors. So, a slight exclusion might be reasonable as we're stabilizing and wrapping that support, but we will not be seeing expulsion. And when we see subsequent incidents at each level, then it is sometimes appropriate to be looking for exclusion as a way to provide greater levels of support and to balance the needs of the community with the needs of the individual. I want to stress, we used to call these first and second offenses, and we're really using a student stance and changing our language to describe these as incidents. Go ahead, Danielle.
All right, so we can go ahead and go to that next slide. So, I did want to provide you just kind of a picture of what we're seeing here. So, we have, this year, we had 61 students who did go forward to LifeWorks for a substance use assessment. And so, these were kind of unique clients that were served. We had about 15 students out of those 61 students who required substance use disorder treatment, and they were referred to them. And the nice thing about our connection with LifeWorks is LifeWorks can provide the substance use disorder treatment. And so, when they come through on an assessment with us, LifeWorks then can say, we're going to work with you on a treatment plan for those who are higher level.
for those who are higher level of risk for students. So as you can see, you know, in quarter two, there were two students who did not opt to access the substance use disorder treatment at LifeWorks, but in the first quarter, all those students did. So this is really seeing like that next level of connection so that, you know, we can exclude a kid, but we're not treating the problem, which is their substance use. And so we really want to move to that, you know, how do we help support that, those students with that? Because being at home is not going to change them accessing drugs and alcohol. So that's one of the things we need to work towards. Next slide, please. So for this next year, for this coming school year, we have a very, we, part of our BH&amp;W adoption is a very specific carve out around substance use prevention and intervention. And so we will have some general prevention through Division 22 about substance use. But the next level is those students who are, who have had incidents and then having more targeted supports. So there's one program where instead of doing our insight program and they're doing like an online independent activity, they will meet with one of our proposed budgeted substance use counselors. And so those people will meet with the students three times, one-on-one and their family to kind of, to talk about the substance use, what their needs are. And then we're also looking to add a, a class that would be a semester class, a long class that would be taught by these substance use counselors. As very targeted for students who are engaging or at risk for substance use. So really looking at how we do that. And then I am currently exploring a partnership with Lake Oswego School District where they have Harmony High School, which is actually a high school, also known across the nation as Recovery High. And it is a, it's a school that while students are going there and they're getting their, you know, their completing general education classes and stuff, they are also in an environment to work on their treatment needs. And so it's really looking at this next level of students who are lower level interventions are not working and really trying to avoid leading to one, students being expelled or excluded from school as well as the potential for overdose or any of those other things in our system. Okay, next slide. And I think that's all I got for mine. So thank you all. Excited to be here and to present on just this work of what we're doing as a district to really try to help these students. So yeah.
We got a question from Susan before you move on, Danielle.
Yep.
So Danielle, I'm kind of tying the, the students who have disciplinary issues with the students that have substance abuse. And they're kind of tied to mental health issues. And you stated that we really don't have as much support for mental health as, you know, the demand is. Is there a thought to not only contract with LifeWorks for substance abuse evaluation, but also for support for mental health as well?
So yeah, I have a meeting with Morrison Center, actually, I think later this week. And we're trying to explore what kind of options they have in terms of being able to provide therapists within the school setting. But we have to work on that because here's the dance that we have. We are a K-12, pre-K-12 education system and our, our charge is really around educating students. And so we have to be careful about pulling kids from their instruction in order to get their therapy. But we also know it's a chicken or egg thing, right? So if I'm not able to access my instruction because my mental health is not well, then I, you know, I'm maybe then just being disruptive in the classroom. So we're trying to explore what that might look like. And then for our students who are having substance use issues, when they go through and if they are identified as having a substance use disorder, part of their treatment is mental health treatment along with the substance use treatment. So it's a combined piece. So that's really where we're hoping that our relationship with LifeWorks will help those students also get their mental health components met through there as well as their substance use pieces. So, but yes, we're exploring those options with, I reached out to LifeWorks, they were not available, but Morrison is coming to meet with, or gonna be.
Really glad to hear that, Danielle. Thank you.
Sunita. Sunita, I think you're on mute.
I thought I wasn't. So thank you. Good information. I really like the fact that you're using the exclusion part as your last resort. I also like the part that you guys are getting a lot of PD because it's a stressful work. My question to you is that, you know, how do you track students? For instance, a student is always student. COVID happened and they come to a new school and then things happen to them, whatever. They're bullied or they start slowly losing confidence in themselves and they start fading and they are dropping out of their classes. They need help. There's no physical harm, but there's a lot of mental harm to them. And the parents need support. How are those students tracked? Who are doing good and suddenly starts slipping? How do we support those students and the parents?
So in our system, we have, we have a couple of things. So one, we have an early warning system, which is this report that comes out and it's populated every day and it goes out to the counselors. And it looks at attendance, it looks at grades, it looks at a range of different indicators, right? So those staff members have an opportunity to look at that and kind of see which students are rising kind of on the red zone. So if you had a student who was an A student and all of a sudden their grades are dropping and they're not attending or they're not engaging, they'll flag on that report. We also have dropout detective, which is another tool that our grad mentors at high school are utilizing, where they're able to look at first, teachers who are utilizing Canvas for lessons. They can pull reports through dropout detective and flag those students who are on track to have like an I or an N. And those grad mentors then reach out to those students in particular. So we know we have students who were high performing students who have dropped off in terms of their skills. So these systems are, are set up to catch them. Additionally, our referrals to BH&amp;W. So we do have students who are coming through there where the teachers are flagging them for possible like depression or anxiety. That's where I think furthermore that our, the screening tool, the, the mental health screening tool that we're going to be adopting will come into play because it's a self-reporting tool that will have the students complete. And then those BH&amp;W teams will be able to look at who's, who's reporting pretty at risk. And that a student who's performing or, you know, reporting at risk may not be your student who has I's and N's, right? It could be a straight A student who is on track to be the valedictorian, who is flagging for, you know, signs of depression or anxiety. So those are some of the things that we already do and what we're building to do for the future.
So the tracking, does it happen when they change the school as well?
Well, so in our system, right? So if there are students who has like accommodations or anything that is in synergy, we are also working, IT has been wonderful. I'm working with us with a MTSS multi-tiered support system. So our goal is to then, once we, to report all interventions in synergy. So when that student moves from one school to another, that will go with them. Currently, that information can be found in their QUM folder, but that means you have to go into the office. You gotta know where the QUM folder is and you gotta go through it. So we're building the system so that it will be where all the other student information is so that people can pull that up.
And how are the parents supported when a student is going through a hard time?
Yeah. So our parents, so we have social workers in all our schools. So a big part of the social worker role is the parent connection and outreach. So if we have students who are being flagged through that system, it's trying to identify what the needs are of, of the family. So then those, the social worker is working on basic needs. They're looking at connecting them with community-based resources. Fortunately, through SIA, we have a partnership with NAMI, the National Alliance of Mental Illness. So they are currently running parent groups for us. So our goal next year is to start expanding those group opportunities and kind of doing some very targeted family engagement sessions for families to come to about how to support your student, you know, with learning, how do you, you know, mental illness, financial issues, those kinds of things. Really looking at a parent, parent engagement series about that.
Thank you.
Corinne and Susan.
Hey, thanks for all this work. This is amazing. And it, again, it fills my heart to see how comprehensive it is. I know we have a ways to go, but it, this is amazing in that we're partnering with our community partners, LifeWorks and NAMI. And possibly the Morrison Center to support is great. I was wondering about the mental health screener you mentioned and part of the professional development. And if, I'm wondering if it was normed on diverse student populations or, and that might not be a question you can answer now. But I just, sometimes with those health screenings, that's one of my wonderings.
So when we, we looked at several screeners and one of the biggest things, it's taken a while for us to get to where we are with our adoption and Dr. Bridges heard this today, that our front load in last spring was about making sure that anything we adopted was anti-bias and anti-racist in nature and that it was inclusive of all students. We actually went in, there was one set of materials that the team had thought they were going to use, like, they were like, yes, we want, we're going to want to pilot this. And they got into it and threw it out the, the window. They're like, no, this is not inclusive in nature. It is not supportive of all our students. So that has really been the approach with our, the screener, screening tools that we've looked at as well, to make sure that they are inclusive and that they have been utilized on a wider range of students and not just white, middle-class students. So yes.
Cool. Thank you. I think, um, I think that was it for me. Thank you.
Susan, did you still have a question?
Danielle, I just have a comment because I think, you know, personally, trauma that my family went through four or five years ago and, you know, and how much I wanted to see the dial moved. And I'm seeing the dial truly moved and I'm really excited. I know there's a ways to go, but just, you know, seeing it and hearing it. And I'm always going to advocate, especially for the kids that don't have the resources that, you know, we have. I am just so excited and thank you and your team for all your work to make what's happening now happen. And to continue to make it happen. It's, it's, you're making such a difference in our children's lives and I just wanted to thank you.
Well, thank you. I mean, I can't think, if you think about where we were 10 years ago, I was just, you know, talking about this to where we are now. It's really been the support of the board and Superintendent Grodding and Jenny Hansman and just our TNL team to say, this is important. And just like, you know, the conversations 10 years ago were never inclusive of really social, emotional, like wellbeing of students. And it's not that people didn't care. They just, that was not part of our vernacular. And then that has completely changed. And I just feel like when I look at the work, you know, the fact that we look at, yes, discipline data and we, and, and we're not proud of it. And we want to do something to change that. I feel like we are at a point as, as a district that we are going to try, we're, we're making, taking a lead, right? Like we're saying, you know what, Oregon Department of Ed, all we've ever heard or gotten from you about substance use is about the discipline and how you can expel a kid, even if they're on an IEP, if they're using drugs, right? We want something more robust. The fact that I, we are adding Narcan to all our comprehensive high schools and middle schools and elementary schools is just a reaction to a larger problem, right? And so as a system, I just got to thank all of you for your willingness to support this through SIA, through ESR, through all of us. So, you know, and we got a long way to go, but it definitely feels like we're making some movement.
Corinne.
The, um, only, one piece that came to mind as we were doing this work in another district is a, as you put the information in synergy, making sure that the student's confidentiality piece is in place. So putting it in synergy, but in a place that maybe certain people can have access to it as a, and obviously that's probably a non-brainer. But just wanted to mention that as we want to make sure that people have access to our students' information as they move from school. So they get the best supports possible, but also knowing that some of this information is confidential in some ways.
Our IT department is very good at limiting permissions for certain information. So I gotta give a shout out for them on that.
Thanks, doctor. I'm cognizant of the time, but I did want to go through a couple of pages in the report and provide some context for the board. I'm John Bridges, the district's administrator for accountability. And hopefully you can see my screen. The first area the board asked for data on for semester one was whether responses to student discipline at the elementary and secondary level were resulting in exclusion from class, which could be in school, out of school suspension or expulsion. Or were they other remedies like having restorative circles, contacting a parent, loss of privileges, those sorts of things. So that data for semester one is disaggregated here. And you can see that for elementary, that we do have disproportionality for our Native American, Pacific Islander and white students. Those are all, the non-exclusionary responses are all above the average for all students. Well, Ken was brilliant enough to suggest, well, maybe the board would like to know how this compares to other years. So I did go back to the first semester of 2017, 18 and replicate this data. And one piece of good news is that our non-exclusions at the elementary level are a third of what they were in 2017, 18. And specifically around race and ethnicity. If I'd included the 2017, 18 data per semester one, the non-exclusions for black students were double the rate of all students in 2017, 18. And now you can see that they're well below the rate for all students. On the flip side, for our smallest student groups, Native American students and Pacific Islanders in the first semester of 2017, 18, non-exclusions were below the rate for all students. And you can see here that they're above. In terms of exclusions at elementary, our exclusion rates per student are up 18% from 2017, 18. Doesn't mean the, the number of exclusions are up, but the rate is up. We have slightly more exclusions at elementary, but we have a smaller population of elementary students than we did in 2017, 18. In 2017, 18, and so these would be the lime colored bars. Both black students and multiracial students had exclusion rates that were greater than the all-student group. And you see that those have fallen below the rate for all students in 2021, 2022. In fact, the only group where the exclusion rate is above the rate for all students in 2017, 18. And this year, my guess for my last comment is white students. At the secondary level, the, the disproportionality in terms of race, both for non-exclusions and exclusions are pretty similar. Black students, Hispanic students, Pacific Islanders, and to a lesser extent, our Native American students. Those are the highest or are above the rate for all students in 2021, 22 first semester. That's also true for 2017, 18, with the exception of Native Americans. with the exception of Native American students, which were below the rate for all students in 17-18 and have kinda crept up in terms of non-exclusions. Same thing for the exclusion rates. In terms of overall, our non-exclusion rates are down 25% from 2017-18. Our exclusion rates are up 30% from 2017-18. So on pages two and three, oh, I'm sorry. Two and three are the exclusion rates by school, and I just wanna acknowledge that, one, this is the number of exclusion. So as Ken said at the onset, we're talking, a student can generate one, two, three, four, five or more responses, whether it's an exclusion or not. In this case, we're looking at exclusions. We're not talking about the number of students. We're talking about the number of exclusions for 100 students enrolled. And then I wanna acknowledge that color coding is a little arbitrary, the 30%, 300% level, but I wanna come back to that 30% when we get to the last page of the report and say why that may be an appropriate benchmark to look at. Four and five and six and seven are disaggregating. Again, this was the board's request to disaggregate by race, ethnicity, exclusions based on the violation or the offense. I don't like to use that term, but that's that's the way I think of it. So first to acknowledge that students can receive an intervention for their behavior based on a single violation. For, so for example, defiance of authority, or that violation or that incident could involve multiple violations, which are harder to classify. So then non-exclusion rates, what, looking back and comparing this data to 2017-18, just at the all-student level, is that for elementary, remember, this was 67% decrease between 2017-18 and 2020-21 for non-exclusions. A big driver of that is really the more discretionary what could be considered more discretionary violation. So for example, defiance of authority, you see here that there were five responses to incidents where the student was deemed to be defined authority. In 17-18, it was 173. So it's a huge difference. And I think, I don't like, I like to talk about the data and not conjecture on the whys, but I think as the team has talked about, the fact that we have more tools in our tool belt to respond to student's behavior, that doesn't necessarily mean the principals gotta intervene and enter something into synergy, but we have behavioral health and wellness teams. We have student success coaches at the elementary level that can intervene without having to go to some sort of disciplinary response. Having more tools in our tool belt is helping. In terms of the secondary exclusions, where we had some increases, I think some of the drivers of the increases for exclusions or that are bucking the trend where we were reducing non-exclusions at the secondary level are fighting and bullying and harassment, exclusions for those are up 60% between 2017-18 and 2021-22. And again, I just, just reiterate, exclusion is not the first response, but sometimes it's the appropriate response to help with, we know exclusions don't change, exclusions alone don't change behavior. The research says that. But we also have a responsibility, as you said, from the onset, for student safety. And sometimes, if it's fighting, there needs to be a cooling off period or a separation of students to make sure that the behavior can be addressed effectively. Another driver of exclusions and bucking the trend in non-exclusions is for tobacco, which includes vaping. Those have more than doubled between 2017-18 and 21-22 at the secondary level. And then also for non-exclusions, it's again bullying and harassment, sexual harassment, tobacco and vandalism are going up, even though the overall rate for non-exclusions has gone down over time. Finally, the last page of the report tries to put this in context. And the goal, I didn't get it exactly right in this report. I had to go back and look. We've been working, or we worked with Education Northwest and an alliance of districts to address disproportionate discipline, going back to, I think it was about 2013-14. And one thing Education Northwest helped us with was to identify what should our goal be for reducing disproportionality. And based on their research, if these risk ratios, which compare the likelihood that a student of color is going to be excluded compared to white students, which is our largest racial ethnic group, if those ratios are between 0.8 and 1.25, we would say that we have reduced disproportionality to an acceptable level. So we're not there yet, but the, I'm sure you can see from the charts that the trend over time is that we are reducing disproportionality in our exclusions of students. This is not incidents, this is actually students from class. Be, long-term picture, our, the students we're excluding from class was really high in 2012-13. It's fallen until about 2016-17, and it started to increase again before the pandemic. And then our data kinda gets interrupted. So in 2019-20, schools were closed on March 13th, so you can't really exclude students from school after that. In 2020-21, few students were on campus and that only incur, occurred in the last quarter of the year. So we only had 30 students that were excluded from the district in 2021. So when the schools are reporting and their 2021 data looks really good, well, yeah, because kids were on campus, so exclusion was not an option. So I just remind folks that, as Danielle said, schools are embedded, and I'm looking at the clock, so I will wrap up. Schools are embedded in society. So what happened between 2016-17 and 2018-19 to start driving those things up? Well, we've had changes in the state in terms of access to drugs and tobacco products. We've had a political environment that some would say fosters attitudes that can lead to more bullying and harassment based on race, ethnicity and other factors. So the work we do is set in that context. And finally, so to provide a safe environment for all of our students and all of our staff, as you heard in the beginning, is really a balancing act. We need to keep students safe. We know that interventions that exclude students from school are not ideal, but we need to balance the safety of our students and our staff. And to reduce, to continue to reduce the disproportionality of our exclusionary discipline based on race, we need to do the continued work of reducing our internal bias based on race through continued learning and reflection, as was mentioned. We also need to continue to examine the possible sources of this systemic bias. So things like the Crown Act and dress codes, if those are disproportionately are implemented and are disproportionate proportionally impacting our students of color, we need to continue to root those out and address them. At the same time, our restorative justice practices are important to strengthen those relationships that have been severed or weakened by the pandemic, not only between students and teachers, but students and students themselves. I think you see that reflected in the increase in fighting is because students have not been connected to each other because of the pandemic. So we need to continue to address the harassment and the fighting in ways that will reduce those and to counteract the societal forces that are tearing us apart instead of bringing us together. So helping students be included in the curriculum, they see each other, they see themselves in the curriculum, and they have relationships with their classmates is gonna help us continue to address this data. So 6:02, I need to stop right there and see if there are any questions about the data before you all go to break.
Thanks, John. Eric?
Let me unmute. Hey, thanks, Joe. I love, it was a great buffet of data. I mean, I could ask like hours of questions on all that good stuff you guys published, you know. Actually, Tom and I were rapping on the yesterday. There's just so many things. But, um, I just have one little question, like, um, it's kind of like tangential, but like, you know, I'm thinking of like teachers as stakeholders. And I was at like, you know, a track meeting, there's all the metro coaches there, and we're all rapping about ideas and stuff and things are happening. Are we, um, as a district, are we still like, you know, safeguarding and protecting to make sure that they can run an effective and safe environment? With the, you know, the way we're navigating, and to make sure that they are, like, there are lines that get crossed and, you know, like, you, you already mentioned a lot of data where they are, but like, are we, cause like, some of these people thought that, you know, things are so stressful and different than, you know, they got back from COVID and it's like, really out of control potentially at some of these schools. So how do we navigate like, um, the best things on studies and research for kids, you know, restorative justice and keeping them in the school versus like, you know, protecting your staff and ma- making them wanna stay a long time, a long period of time?
Ken, do you wanna weigh in on that? I know it's, it's definitely a balancing act between the needs of, in, in some cases where, where you have a victim and an offender, it's, we need to keep the victim safe. And at the same time, we need to intervene with the offender so that they continue their education and we change their behavior. So Ken, you wanna expand on that?
Happy to talk about that. Eric, it may not even be in my own classroom where I'm concerned about student behavior. It might be that I I'm seeing my colleague that's reporting behavior that they encountered, or it may be that our, our transitions and passing times are ones where kids are engaging in ways that I, I don't feel safe as an adult and I don't know what to do. So there's a couple levels there, and one would be really having open communication so that staff can take those concerns to the leaders at the site who have a responsibility then to, to learn more about what is happening, to make sure that we are developing strategies and systems at the school level. I know that despite all those best efforts, we've had issues that were quite difficult in the fall, and it was surprising. So, you know, you're well aware of our vandalism numbers are up. Well, that's because we have TikTok challenges to go in and, and to dismantle our bathrooms or to say things or attack your teacher. That, that in itself was out of our control, but we had a responsibility as, as leaders to, to lean into that and to support the safety of our students and staff at those moments. So some of the things we've done is at times, execs are in working with buildings to try to troubleshoot. And, and we've also been very fortunate that ESR funds have been available, that we've been able to identify areas where we don't have adequate people. And, and the reason we might not have adequate people is not only are we bringing back students that have lived through trauma, not only are, are adults navigating that trauma themselves, but responsibilities to keep kids distanced meant that schools were administering six separate lunch periods with that same staff, and they were spread out. So we've been able to, to see some fruit from some of those investments that were made at the middle school level. They were made immediately after winter break. We're seeing stronger systems in place and, and staff have a greater sense of safety. I also think it's, um, you know, an important part that our leaders have to communicate actively about what is happening and to be real about that, but to also to talk about successes and to, to gain the confidence of their staff and their students and their, and their parents. So.
And Kevin, the only thing I would add to that, I think, back to kind of what we talked about right up front is, what are the proactive strategies we're putting in place? So that, you know, I think the work with the BH and W teams, the student success coaches, the counselors, the social workers, having the right people in schools who, who are connecting with kids both in and out of the classrooms is important piece of that. I think the other part of it is, is the equity work that, that buildings are doing, where coming to really understand who are our kids and what are our biases that may or may not be affecting our relationships with kids. And how do we start with ourselves and our reflection and looking at our practices as a way to go, now, how do we help and support students in their behaviors? So I just think that proactive part of it is a really key part of this conversation.
Ugana and then Sunita?
Thank you so much. I appreciate all the information that have been shared by every presenter, and it's a lot of information, quite comprehensive. So thank you. I'm also appreciative of the fact that we acknowledge the existence of implicit bias and and we are willing to, to do the work to, to get rid of it. So my first question would be, how do you determine what discipline to use? We are trying to work around reducing disproportionate discipline. So how do you decide whether to disrupt a student's learning and use suspension, out-of-school suspension, or use in-school suspension? Does it, is it determined by the violation or is this a prerogative of the teacher? How do you determine what to do? How do you decide if student A is gonna be disrupted in their education and suspended out of school? And student B can stay in school and have an in-school discipline? Is there like a handbook around what types of violations warrant what? Or is this something that is purely at the mercy, while the hands of the class teacher who witnessed that violation? That's my first question. I can go on, but how do you want me to proceed? Do you want me to ask all my questions? Cause I have a few. Or should I ask and then pause before I ask my next question? How do you want me to proceed?
Karen, comfortable answering the question you just posed, and then we can continue from there. The Student Code of Conduct, which is published annually as part of our Student Family Handbook, describes four levels of, of behaviors. And those would range from ones that can be addressed by the teacher in the classroom setting with no need to, to provide a report to somebody who's an administrator, to those that are more severe, that would be addressed appropriately with either an exclusion that's being, being directed as a suspension or an in-school suspension or a level four that we look at extended suspensions. So we have a framework. The bottom line, though, is that the idea of progressive discipline is very important, meaning that we have to look at the severity of what happened and we have to look at the frequency of what happened. So we calibrate our practices with administrators to make sure that we don't use the most severe exclusions for those things that can be addressed without exclusion. And so over time, let's say we're talking about bullying. If we see that our work with the student, when we did not exclude the child, is, is being met with repeated incidents, then over time it becomes more progressive, meaning we would move to exclusion. And in some cases, the situation is so very serious or had such a negative impact that we might move to exclude with, with the initial one. So those are the general practices we work on building in our administrators.
Thank you, Ken. My follow-up question to that is, after the student has served their time, for lack of a better word, when they have served their time in exclusion or non-exclusion, what is the step to? Do we have restorative steps to bringing them back into cla- into the classroom? I know that we just I know that we just uh, um, included the behavioral health and wellness team not too long ago. Before this time, did we have a, a restorative step um, that we use to uh, bring back that student into, into the classroom when they come back? What's that?
Thank you for that question, Ugana. I, I um, I know about 12 years worth of history at the middle school level very well because of my work at Cedar Park as principal and, and central office roles. Um, it's been a consistent focus to work on building restorative practices. And it's also an expectation that our building leaders um, engage in required restorative practice work. So as Danielle was explaining, the expectation is now expanded to counselors, it's expanded to um, this, the social workers, et cetera. But it's that very vulnerable moment that we're looking at a student's behavior, the person that can exclude the student is the administrator. So that is our expectation that after a student returns, that building the relationships back is, is an expectation. So that would be a conference either with another student that had the conflict or it would be a, a conflict with, with an adult that that would be addressed. Um, not everybody is ready to participate in that. And so we also have to be thoughtful about how do we plan for a safe return? When people don't want to communicate, when they're not interested in building relationship. How do we predict that we will not be having the same discussion next, the next school day or next week? So people are very thoughtful about having proactive plans to protect this school community from the threat of this uh, reentry not going well.
And I would just add that, that happens at elementary as well. And oftentimes it's conversation and creating opportunities for kids to build relationships back with each other. So that might be um, time for kids to come and play a game together. So they start to realize that they, they're not so different or that they can heal or they, um, and then to Ken's point, it's the time and place for that really matters. So that we are both a- addressing both the needs of the one who was harmed as well as the one who did the harming. Um, and parents are very much a part of that conversation so that it's at the elementary level. Not that they're in the restorative part, but helping with parents so that parents can help coach their child on how to do it, how to engage in it, the kind of conversations that can happen both at home and at school. Um, but that restorative piece, you know, I've been doing this a long time and I'm not sure we always called it restorative, but we've always had those conversations. Finding ways for kids to come to some understanding with each other and to, and that when they know each other better, there's less likelihood that there's something that harm is going to get done.
Thank you so much, Patrick and Ken. Um, sorry for hijacking the floor. I'm gonna ask one more question and then I'll let my fellow board members continue with the questions and then I can ask the rest of my questions later if that's okay. I apologize. So my next question is around um, cultural responsiveness. So when you're dealing with um, a student from a non-English speaking family, um, do you, is there any sort of um, form of support that we give them? How, how do we, how do we deal with a student from a non-English speaking family or an immigrant family? Who don't really understand the process and the system? How do we, um, how are we communicating with them around that disciplinary practices?
Well, I'll, I'll start Ken and then you can jump in. I think the, the first place is, is that trying to uh, the proactive piece is trying to hire staff that have, speak the languages of their kids so that they have that experience. If that's not available, Toshiko and her team are fabulous uh, of having interpreters who will engage. And sometimes that could be um, getting in touch with Toshiko and her team and saying, we need a phone call and here's some things that we'd like you to talk about and invite in for a meeting. You know, oftentimes with families, there, there can be a phone call that helps to figure out and solve the problem. But when there is a language uh, that needs to be an interpreter, we truly try to have the family in. So we're building that connection and that relationship so that it's, it's not just on the phone and it's not just this third party, but they're there in person to build that.
Our administrators have a lot of professional development that helps them to build those skills, but as Patrick was saying, um, that may not always be something that families can easily access due to barriers of language and, and culture. Um, I would also reiterate, um, our, our administrators are very skilled in slowing down and teaching parents about how we approach behavior and, and trying to build trust with them. And that's an important component. It isn't just about efficiency of processing a concern very quickly and then turning the student back, but also helping parents to understand, when you bring your concerns to me, I see you. I know that your concerns are valid and you're a vital partner here at the school. So there's important trust building that goes on during those, those very difficult times.
Right, and I think that's that important piece where it's not just the uh, saying, here's the discipline and, and end of conversation. It's, let's talk, let's think about it, let's work together. What, what else can we know and understand about your child? What else can we know and understand about um, your family experience? What else can, to help, and that's that part that we talked about earlier around how, when we work and deal in these situations, context matters. And the family and their experiences and their connection are critical to those conversations. And so building relationships, and it's also important, there's the relationship building that happens in the moment when there's an issue. But it's also incumbent on leaders to say, I'm building relationships with my community over the course of the entire school year. So that when there is a situation, we're, we're at a place where we have a relationship already.
Thank you. I appreciate all your responses and I'm gonna stop now and ask the rest of my questions later. Thank you.
Sunita and then Karen.
I want to thank you for all the information that you have provided. It's really good. Because safety and enriching environment is one of the most important things in the school before even we can tackle the curriculum. So I appreciate and acknowledge the fact that the numbers have gone down for exclusion, but not enough because there is still implicit bias and we need to work on that. And I am very hopeful that the information that you have provided will help you guys to drill down on schools and see which schools need, looking at if we can use a different approach to their disciplinary actions. And also I was very impressed with Ken that, you know, just changing how we um, have kids in the hallways like six different, you know, that would bring down, we need to look at things like that because you know, it's in the hallways that kids are scared to go and change classrooms and stuff. So it's very helpful to think at discipline in a different way and non-exclusion. Um, how we can help kids know what impact their actions are doing. So um, thank you once again because this data will help because we can't talk about schools, but you can drill down on schools now and see where, where we can make changes. So thank you.
Karen and then Ugana.
Um, I just, and I don't need to answer now, but some of the areas that I see where we can make some, you know, growth. Is, I, I see that in the non-exclusion for secondary, we still are excluding kids for unexcused absences. There's a hundred and ten of them. Um, which seems kind of odd that we would exclude them because they're not coming to school. So that's one like, that I think it would be great to look at. Defiance of authority um, is one that can be very, you know, um, let's say like it could um, kind of judgment, but I don't need an answer now, but it would be good, I would love to learn more about hot, what rubric we're using for defiance of authority. Um, I'm sure people don't take it lightly, but um, and then for the exclusion secondary, I see exclusions for tardiness. So I'm like, there's other issues happening for exclusion for tardiness and if you're already tardy and you're not coming to school and then we're excluding them. And then there's unexcused absences again pops up there for, you know, exclusion which, and then I know definitely weapons are very serious. I don't think that's a light one, but there's weapons that are look-alike weapons. So that was just an interesting one. I don't think that kids should be even look-alike weapons to school like that. I don't think that's a positive. But it was just um, that I had never heard of something like that, that it's interesting that we've differentiated from somebody bringing a, a real weapon to one that is um, a look-alike weapon and how they're using it. Um, we definitely don't want violence in our schools as we said, safety comes first and if kids do not feel safe, they will not learn. So that, that's just all. Thanks, thanks for all the work.
Ugana.
Okay, I apologize again. I'm gonna ask a few other questions. Please bear with me. Um, I wanted to know, um, is there an appeal process? If a student is disciplined and they want to appeal it, is there a process? And is this easily um, available or accessible to families?
Ken, I can address that. Um, clear, clearly there's always an informal appeal process and that would be for parents to say, I don't believe that my child was uh, dealt with in a way that is acceptable or I, I have concerns about your response to um, what happened at the school. Um, formally in our policy, it says that um, exclusions up to four days do not have um, a formal appeal process, but for those exclusions that are four days or more, there is an exclusion. There's a, a, a formal way for them to, to appeal that. I think I got that right. I'll double check and I'll follow up with you in writing to make sure I got that right.
And we do provide that to parents? Do they have access to that?
It's, it's published. Um, I'm not sure that every time there's an interaction with a parent that that, that specific part is, is shared.
Okay, I, I feel like um, parents should be given the option to know what options they have. If you do not agree with the decision that has been taken to uh, suspend or expel or whatever the situation is. I think that parents should be given, let them explore all their options, be, be made aware that there are options available if they do not agree with the decision that has been taken regarding their child. Thank you. So um, my next question would be around, um, I know we're not supposed to mention schools, but it's quite obvious that there are schools that still have um, high uh, suspension rates. And uh, I was wondering if there is any plan to provide more um, maybe support or coaching to these schools that are recording high, high rates um, in, in their exclusion practices? And also uh, the staff getting trained um, in restorative justice? Is this training something that would be made compulsory?
I didn't start and then if others want to uh, help to strengthen my answer, that'd be great. Um, anytime that executives once again consist, consistently are looking at data, bringing that data to the attention of the principal. Um, using a coaching stance usually to start and then if things are persisting to have those conversations begin to look more directive. Um, what I want to stress is that for the data from this year, the student behaviors that were manifesting in schools have been quite extraordinary. John made it clear that what we are seeing is that behavior is communicating need and many of our students were, were in deep need. And sometimes um, some of those incidents were, were very serious. And so I do want to acknowledge that, but we can see patterns over time where it, it requires a greater level of scrutiny and support. And so um, that is the work that execs do with, with principals over and over. Danielle, do you have anything to add about her question about restorative practices?
So one of the things that we're looking at um, is, you know, in terms of our behavioral health and wellness uh, adoption, there will be a strand around restorative practices and what that would look like. Um, additionally, I know through um, our negotiations, there is some conversation about that because I know that our uh, union partners through BEA are interested in that component as well. So there is a lot of conversation around what that might look like. I know a lot of our schools have utilized our, our restorative practices trainers to come in and do like during a staff meeting, an hour training. One thing i- it's important to note is restored, intro to restorative practices is a full day training. And then uh, the conferencing is another full day training. So we do run into some um, complexity with the limitations around professional development and the ability to pull people from the classroom or having PD days where we can deliver that. It doesn't mean it's a barrier that we can't overcome, but that's why we are really trying to invest in those people who um, might not be student facing like in the classroom, getting them trained out so that they can do many trainings within um, their school during a PD day or during a staff meeting.
So is this um, optional or compulsory training?
For our behavioral health and wellness staff, it is required. They are required to attend. Um, and then for if it's delivered during um, their staff meeting or a building PD, it would be required to attend unless they, you know, have a reason not to be there.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, my last question is gonna be around elementary school suspensions. I understand um, the disciplinary rates or uh, suspension practices in middle schools and secondary school, but I still cannot understand elementary school. Um, what are the possible reasons to suspend a student in the elementary school? What, what, what uh, what do those violations look like? I, I can't wrap my mind around it.
Yeah, I appreciate that and I think that it's, it's ongoing work as, as principals look at, and I think it goes back to something Ken said earlier. That sometimes it's about progressive discipline. Uh, sometimes it is uh, a repeated something over time and that needs for the health and safety that it might need to be that that a child is removed for, for a period of time. It can also be at times that it creates space for a school to do some planning. So in order for that child to be successful at school, um, there's can also be times when it is, there's sort of some compulsory things around like if a child brings uh, a weapon to school, for example, or if there is um, some extreme fighting, but it's really at the, at the elementary level and I believe it's at the secondary level too. It's, it's not the go-to for an elementary principal. And it is really the last resort that they would come at. Um, and really looking at the context and as Kenan said, the severity and the frequency. So it is, it's something that every principal that we work with at elementary, it's, it's the last thing they want to do. But at times, it's what they feel they need to do for their school, for their community.
Okay, um, thank you. I have been enlightened uh, these few minutes that you guys have answered my questions and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Um, just one last thing, I think I agree with Ugana pointed out, we have some of our schools that have really high rates in our middle schools of in the data and um, I've, we've talked about, I've talked with some of the, of you before about um, some of the discipline pieces and I've heard about some of the changes you're making where you're putting some extra staff. Um, and I'm still hearing from staff asking for support, um, like systems within those schools. And I think summertime, summer school would be a great time for them to try out their new systems and put in place some new, new, new supports and revamp so that students can come to summer school and have a um, a real healthy s- space for themselves um, and continue their learning. So thank you.
Ugana.
I have one last question. Um, I, I wanted to know if this is a data or report that we're gonna be getting on a regular basis now?
You know what, I will, I'll take that one, Ugana, because um, that was what I was gonna wrap up with is I think we've had a really rich conversation today. Um, I have never seen as much information presented to the board. Um, both on how our practices work, our systems work, drilling down to the different types of incidents and how we look at them as well as the reporting on the data. And so I'm hoping this is something that we continue as a regular report. Um, and I would uh, propose that um, um, Dawn and folks come back with, with the frequency on that report. Um, with what we would be looking at, if we want to be doing that every year, if we want to be doing that more frequently than that. We also have an opportunity next year as we're taking a look at our school reports. Um, and, and taking those into account and then also with our strategic plan, because this may be something that we can add into our strategic plan processes. Um, and I know as we move from uh, one superintendent to another, um, there may be some shifts there as well and some opportunities to take a look at different systems and how reporting occurs. So I don't have a, a, a cut and dry answer for you now, but I do think that this is something that we need to see regularly. And I appreciate this conversation because I think this conversation is many years in the, in, in the making. And it was, it was great to be here tonight and actually see all of this information presented to the board. I'm walking away with a much more rich understanding of what's happening in our district, what our challenges are, some of the great work that's being done. Some of the trend lines that are helping reduce some of those challenges and then others where we may need more work. Um, but I, I'm, I'm looking at discipline and practices across our district diff- differently because we've received a lot more information and I really appreciate that. So Ugana, I don't want to cut you off there. Um, but I, I did, I felt like that was the, the appropriate answer. Do you, do you have more comments or questions?
No, I'm, I'm good. Thank you so very much. I appreciate your response.
Great. Um, any other comments from the board before we close up here? Okay, well, again, a big thank you. That was a lot of work that went into presenting that data. It was incredibly thoughtful. Thank you for everybody who showed up to give this presentation to us. It is much appreciated. Um, with that, we're about six thirty. So board members, if we want to come back at seven o'clock after we've had an opportunity to get a little bit of uh, food in us and we will um, start with uh, basically the second half of the meeting.
I see you, Tim Chuck.
You following the basketball game?
No, what's the score right now?
UNC at 28-22 with 10 minutes left in the first half.
That's crazy Cinderella story number eight.
Yeah.
We need to do these meetings in person. I can't focus without you guys around me and the food and the buffet.
All right. We are about one minute away, guys. Just enough time to enjoy some of that microwave mac and cheese.
Hungarian stew not from Costco over here.
Nice.
Crock pot.
Nice. I see we got, we got Mike on the ready.
Yep, we'll be ready to go.
Okay. Just give it one second for Susan and we will start in. Okay, awesome. Okay, well, welcome everybody. I hope folks had got a good meal in there. And we will be starting back with the budget update and associate superintendent Schofield.
Thank you, Chair Colette. Members of the board appreciate your time and attention tonight. As opposed to our normal financial update, which we'll provide you on a monthly basis, we're going to talk a little bit tonight about the staffing allocation methodology. This is a new staffing allocation, relatively new staffing allocation methodology that we adopted back in about January of 2020, just before COVID hit. And I've got a couple of friends here with me tonight who are going to help me with this presentation. Jenny works closely with me on the staffing allocation methodology from the TNL standpoint. And we have Jessica Jones, our budget manager here. She's the brains behind the staffing allocation methodology. So I'm going to share my screen. And I'll turn it over to Jenny.
Thanks, Mike. Hello again. I'm here to talk to you about the staffing allocation methodology. And as Mike explained, we've had the SAM model for many, many years in our district. But a few years ago, we knew that we needed to take a really deep look into how we were allocating resources to our schools. And really wanted to make sure that we were doing it in an equitable fashion. So a few prior to Mike coming on, we, teaching and learning took on the, I guess, challenge of redesigning our SAM model. And then making processes in place so that we could have the cabinet and everyone else weigh in to make sure that it's something that all of us needed to do. And there were many, many reasons why this was such an important decision to make. But the biggest one, I would say, you know how I go over the equity lens each time we meet? That was probably the number one reason we decided to start this redesign process. And so with that, it was, the big why is because of the equity lens. But as you can see on this slide, several other things came into play. We knew that we had students living in poverty that required greater support than we were able to give at all of our schools. We also know that all of our schools serve students that are living in poverty. It's not just some of our schools. It's not just your title schools, but it's all schools have students that are living in poverty. They also, all schools should receive substantial funding to support the academic and social emotional needs of students living in poverty. We knew that was true and we knew that all three of these things weren't necessarily happening in our SAM model. Title I funds are considered supplemental and they do not impact class size. So that was another reason why we needed to take another look at our SAM model. And then finally, needs-based staffing is always used to determine allocations for classroom teachers, counselors, and non-salary. Next slide. So it's a pretty extensive process that we went through. The new SAM model was created by a team that was made up of teaching and learning staff, human resources staff, business services, IT. And it was during the 2021 planning phase at the beginning. The catalyst for doing this was because if you remember back then, we were using or starting the SIA process for the Student Investment Act. And we needed to make sure that we were aligning practices. And it was a perfect time to not only redesign SAM, but also look at what we were doing for SIA to make sure that we were in alignment. So a committee was formed of all of those, including some of our building principals and building administrators. And we met probably, it started out probably bi-weekly, but it did end up by the end to meet weekly. The staffing allocation methodologies were reviewed throughout the fall and winter of 2019, 2020. And then we added the student investment account, which we anticipated it would be 32 million. The committee then analyzed and discussed SAM. So what we did was we took a look at all of our staffing from way back, way back in 2008 and nine, all the way up to 2019 and 20. And we did that because we wanted to see kind of how our schools have been allocated resources for all of those different times and what we needed to really improve. So at that time, we also did some surveying of our principals and administrators and gave a needs assessment to see what, what are some of the obstacles that principals were having in their buildings? And what resources did they need more of or less of for that matter? So we, in the, in these meetings, we discussed those over time. But we also took a look at what other districts were doing around us. So we took different allocation models and we analyzed them, looked at them both locally and nationally. Jessica in the business office, I always say, made me go to Boston for a business workshop on budgeting, which the teaching and learning mind in, in, for myself wasn't exactly what I wanted to do, but actually learned a ton. So really glad I did it. And we talked a lot about what other districts were doing nationally. So that redesign of SAM was hopefully going to be allocated in 2020 and 2021 budget year. But what happened at that time, we, we got everything we needed. We took it to Cabinet. We got a go-ahead from Cabinet that it was pretty much over budget. So we needed to make sure that we kind of looked at it and took some of the things off because we could not fully implement it with the current budget. But it was planning to go out right before the pandemic hit. So due to CDL, many of the changes that were in SAM that we had cabinets, okay, we were ready to launch, were not fully implemented or realized in that year because we didn't have kids in schools. So it's really important to know that while we do not have the resources to fully fund the new SAM at that time, as it was created, it provides a roadmap really for future investments because it was pretty healthy in terms of the resources we felt each school should, should have. And yet we were only able to fund some of it. But hopefully that redesign of that model, something to look at for the next five to 10 years to make sure that someday we hope we'll get to that place. Next slide. This is just a slide of some of the committee members that were part of that redesign model. And then did the presentation and took that presentation to Cabinet to get the go-ahead to implement the new SAM model. And as I said before, it was to be implemented fully before the pandemic hit. But we just realized the entire SAM change or redesign this past year. So what you've seen in schools is the new SAM model. Next slide. Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm going to walk you through a little bit more of the formulas and how this allocation, how these allocations go out to our schools. The first slide I have here is a look inside our SAM document. These are examples of the ratios that were used to allocate classroom teachers in the 21-22 school year. For elementary, we are looking at the number of kindergarten through second grade students.
As Mike explained, we've had the SAM model for many, many years in our district. But a few years ago, we knew that we needed to take a really deep look into how we were allocating resources to our schools. And really wanted to make sure that we were doing it in an equitable fashion. So a few prior to Mike coming on, we, teaching and learning took on the, I guess, challenge of redesigning our SAM model. And then making processes in place so that we could have the cabinet and everyone else weigh in to make sure that it's something that all of us needed to do. And there were many, many reasons why this was such an important decision to make, but the biggest one, I would say, you know how I go over the equity lens each time we meet, that was probably the number one reason we decided to start this redesign process. And so with that, it was, the big why is because of the equity lens. But as you can see on this slide, several other things came into play. We knew that we had students living in poverty that required greater support than we were able to give at all of our schools. We also know that all of our schools serve students that are living in poverty. It's not just some of our schools. It's not just your title schools, but it's all schools have students that are living in poverty. They also, all schools should receive a substantial funding to support the academic and social emotional needs of students living in poverty. We knew that was true and we knew that all three of these things weren't necessarily happening in our SAM model. Title one funds are considered supplemental and they do not impact class size. So that was another reason why we needed to take another look at our SAM model. And then finally, needs-based staffing is always used to determine allocations for classroom teachers, counselors, and non-salary. Next slide. So it was a pretty extensive process that we went through. The new SAM model was created by a team that was made up of teaching and learning staff, human resources staff, business services, IT. And it was during the 2021 planning phase at the beginning. The catalyst for doing this was because if you remember back then, we were using or starting the SIA process for the Student Investment Act. And we needed to make sure that we were aligning practices and it was a perfect time to not only redesign SAM, but also look at what we were doing for SIA to make sure that we were in alignment. So a committee was formed of all of those, including some of our building principals and building administrators. And we met probably, it started out probably bi-weekly, but it did end up by the end to, to meet weekly. The staffing allocation methodologies were reviewed throughout the fall and winter of nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. And then we added the student investment account, which we anticipated it would be thirty-two million. The committee then analyzed and discussed SAM. So what we did was we took a look at all of our staffing from way back, way back, in two thousand eight and nine, all the way up to two thousand nineteen and twenty. And we did that because we wanted to see kind of how our schools have been allocated resources for all of those different times and what we needed to really improve. So at that time, we also did some surveying of our principals and administrators and gave a needs assessment to see what, what are some of the obstacles that principals were having in their buildings? And what resources did they need more of or less of for that matter? So we, in the, in these meetings, we discussed those over time. But we also took a look at what other districts were doing around us. So we took different allocation models and we analyzed them, looked at them both locally and nationally. Jessica in the business office, I always say, made me go to Boston for a business workshop on budgeting, which the teaching and learning mind in, in, for myself wasn't exactly what I wanted to do, but actually learned a ton. So really glad I did it. And we talked a lot about what other districts were doing nationally. So that redesign of SAM was hopefully going to be allocated in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one budget year. But what happened at that time, we, we got everything we needed. We took it to Cabinet. We got a go-ahead from Cabinet that it was pretty much over budget. So we needed to make sure that we kind of looked at it and took some of the things off. Because we could not fully implement it with the current budget. But it was planning to go out right before the pandemic hit. So due to CDL, many of the changes that were in SAM that we had cabinets, okay, we were ready to launch. Were not fully implemented or realized in that year because we didn't have kids in schools. So it's really in, important to know that while we do not have the resources to fully fund the new SAM at that time, as it was created, it provides a roadmap, really for future investments because it was pretty healthy in terms of the resources we felt each school should, should have. And yet we were only able to fund some of it. But hopefully that redesign of that model, something to look at for the next five to 10 years to make sure that someday we hope we'll get to that place. Next slide. This is just a slide of some of the committee members that were part of that redesign model and then did the presentation and took that presentation to Cabinet to get the go-ahead to implement the new SAM model. And as I said before, it was to be implemented fully before the pandemic hit. But we just realized the entire SAM change or redesign this past year. So what you've seen in schools is the new SAM model. Next slide. Hey, Jessica, I think we're onto you.
I'm one more. This is you, Jenny.
Okay, good. So that SAM model included using weighted enrollment for classroom teachers, counselors, non-salary allocations, and secondary assistant principals. So that weighted enrollment is what we use the equity lens for. That was the why behind why we wanted to do this. And the way that's calculated is it's based on the number of projected students and the school's direct certification percentage. Also, direct certification information is received from the Nutrition Services Department is where we get that from. And the same methodology and data timeline is used for Title One determination in the district. Jessica can kind of go deeper into that as she's going to kind of take you into the numbers of what that actually looks like. We also knew that there was a significant investment in class size with all of the SIA investments. And that was part of that SAM redesign. And then as you've noticed and as you've heard tonight in our presentation for student re-discipline, we had a significant investment in behavioral health and wellness teams, which included social workers, student success coaches, nurses, counselors, and Fed supports. Those, all three of those pieces made were the most important parts of the SAM redesign. And especially when it comes to class size, our behavior, health, and wellness teams, and the weighted enrollment that gave more resources to our schools in poverty all across K-12. Next slide.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to walk you through a little bit more of the formulas and how this allocation, how these allocations go out to our schools. The first slide I have here is a look inside our SAM document. These are examples of the ratios that were used to allocate classroom teachers in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. For elementary, we are looking at the number of kindergarten through second grade students divided by twenty-six point two and the number of grades three through five students divided by twenty-eight point eight eight. For secondary, it's the total number of students projected at a school divided by twenty-nine point six. Both of these are done on weighted enrollment, not the unweighted enrollment. So we are going to allocate classroom teachers to a school for, based on more students than what we are actually expecting to attend the school. Next slide, please. So to get to our weighted enrollment, as Jenny just mentioned, we use, we use projections that are provided by our demographer and we use the direct certification information, which is provided by Nutrition Services. And it is, we are now using the same information on the same date that the district is also using for the Title One A determination. Using the direct certification percentage, we calculate the number of students in poverty and then we weight those students. The weights that we are using for elementary is one point two five and for secondary, it is one point five. Next slide, please. So the next two slides, I have examples of how this model works with the, what the weighted enrollment really does for a school. This first example is a sample middle school. It is, it has projected enrollment of eight hundred and eighty-three students and it has a poverty percentage of fifty-four point eight percent. So this is one of our higher percentages. If I ran through the calculation on how to weight it at one point five, because it is a secondary school, the weighted enrollment would be one thousand one hundred and twenty-five students. So you can see that that's significantly higher than the projected eight hundred and eighty-three students that our demographer gave us. As you walk through the table here, we have both weighted, what the weighted enrollment does and what would happen if we ran this model on the unweighted enrollment. So you can see how the allocations change. With the weighted enrollment, the school will receive an additional eight point two teachers. Using a very simple math formula, I know this is not the way that it works with core classes and electives, but just using total students divided by the classroom teachers, this would reduce the average class size at this school by six point four. This school also would receive an additional counselor with the weighted enrollment and an additional assistant principal, as well as an additional twenty-one thousand dollars of non-salary. Next slide, please. So, and then this is just a way to look at it differently. These are two different schools. We're using the weighted enrollment on both of these. So School A and School B are very, very similar in are very similar in their enrollment. And they're only off by ten students, but you can see that School B has forty-one point two percent higher poverty. When we wait all of the enrollment, that means that we are going to be allocating an addition, we are going to be allocating resources on an additional three hundred and sixty-nine students that we are not actually projecting will come into our buildings. So as we walk this through on the same, the same thing, using the classroom teacher ratios based on weighted enrollment, School B would receive twelve point six additional teachers, which would, which would lower their average class size by four point four. Again, very simple, straight math calculation. There's an additional, there's an additional counselor. And this one did not have an additional assistant principal and an additional thirty-two thousand dollars of non-salary. So you can see that even though they start very similar in number of students, they have varied, they have very different demographics in their buildings and will be staffed very differently using this new model. And I see the question, Susan, I got ahead of myself. I was thinking of the high school model, which did have an extra counselor. So the middle school, it did not have an extra counselor.
Questions? This is a significant piece of our resources as a school district. It's important that you kind of have at least a general understanding of how this works. This is how we staff all of our schools. And why we are careful to try to adhere to these staffing allocation methodologies so that we're taking into account poverty as it's experienced in each of our schools, not just title schools. So that, that helps all of our schools. And it's a way of allocating resources in, in what I guess I would use with the air quotes, in a fair way. So that one school doesn't get a bunch more resource than another. We have a way of actually allocating these resources. While it's important that we have a system that's flexible, where we can make some changes from year to year. We do think this is an important thing for the, the board to understand as we go into our budget season.
I see some questions. Ugana, Sunita, Susan, and then Eric.
Thank you so much for your presentation. So after all the, all the factors have been taken into account and after implementing all the formulas, what happens if some of the schools are still lacking in resources and still struggling? How do we help them? And I'm specifically speaking for McKinley. You know, I know that, that there's a, there are some struggles going on there. Some of the students are, you know, lacking behind in reading and math and writing. And I do understand that, you know, there are factors that we have to look at in making sure that our resources are equitably shared. But after doing all of this, and there are still some schools that are struggling, what do we do to help them out?
Excellent question, Ugana. In a typical school year, outside of pandemic and not having ESER resources, we, we might have a very small amount of holdback that we could deal with some particular issues at a school. But we would not have a lot of money to address individual needs that are specified outside of the formula. Because we have ESER dollars and, and those dollars are available now. That's what we've been doing with ESER dollars is meeting a lot of needs that we've heard. So principals have gone to their execs, execs have talked to Jenny. Jenny and I have had discussions and that's how we've allocated some additional supports during the current year. We've also identified some of those supports. As Jenny mentioned, some of them were asked for but weren't funded out of our operating budget or SIA. But because we have ESER dollars, we are able to fund them in a more, in a, in a more full-time capacity. So there's certainly some additions we've made through ESER. But going forward, Ugana, those resources will not be available after September of two thousand twenty-four. So in that type of a situation, it would typically be, and Jenny, you can jump in here, but typically it'd be that principal talking with their exec about strategies they need to, to make changes in their schools. But it wouldn't necessarily be a ton of financial resource because we've allocated those dollars based on this formula.
Sunita, Eric, then Karen.
Thank you for your presentation. It helps us understand this model. Couple of questions. One is, for instance, if a school needs, say, counselors instead of teachers, can that dollars be adjusted accordingly to their need? Or does it mean that we'll have to be sticking around like, okay, they need teachers, this many teachers, the model says. But maybe the need for the school is for counselors or social workers. Can that be adjusted?
We have a limited amount of ability to trade staff out. Jessica, do you know specifically which ones are or not, or is it too long of a list?
It's a pretty long list. And it also depends on the funding source. For instance, if it is a teacher that is given through the local option levy, you cannot turn that into a counselor. You'd have to go somewhere else. So it's a pretty long list, though.
So there is flexibility, Sunita, but there are also some rules that, you know, like, that's an excellent point that Jessica made about the local option levy. We promised we'd buy teachers with those, so you can't change those out.
Okay. And my second question is, how is the committee decided for this, you know, for updating this model? And is this like an ongoing thing or it was done in twenty twenty and, or is it looked at every year? And is it the same committee looking at it?
So another good question, Sunita. So we, I think we are at the stage where we've gotten our first kind of full year under our belt of implementing the new SAM. I don't think we knew what it was like for the, for the previous year because we were in CDL for so long. So I think this was our first year of taking a look at it. And what we did this last November was in our, we, we have a small group SAM and a large group SAM. The smaller group SAM is dealing with starter school enrollment issues, bubbles at certain schools. That's a group that is led by Jenny and I. And we have a couple of execs on that. Jessica's there and some HR folks. So we deal with that regardless and we deal with some modest tweaks to the SAM every year. I think this coming fall, we need to broaden that committee again and get some of our broader stakeholders, like we showed you on the slide where it showed, I don't know what that was, twenty-five, thirty people probably. Where we would bring those folks back in, have some discussion about what's working and what isn't. And then talk about what tweaks we can make and what, you know, within some realm of affordability, what we might recommend for changes. So I think we're due for that, Sunita, this coming fall.
Thank you.
Eric and then Karen.
Okay. So I know that we read your financial report, like every, every month or so, you show us like what a school's projected and what the reality was and what we have. So some of them are being quite huge, right? You know, because people are doing flex learning online or the parents are scared. So what kind of tactical adjustments we have? Because that could be quite significant. You might end up with two or three more teachers than you needed one school or another school. I've heard earlier, resource allocation, we need some help over here. So do you guys have that kind of, like a tiger squad of teachers that are, you know, flexible enough to move and, and go where you need them?
So a good question, Eric. The last two falls, the last two Septembers, I think I'll, I'll speak for Jenny here for sure. We have not been having a good time in September because the, the kids have not shown up either in the numbers that we needed or in the locations that we needed them. That caused us to transfer a number of teachers over the last couple of years. We are hoping to avoid that this, in the coming year. As I mentioned earlier, every year we do have a little bit of holdback that we start the year with, where we know what our allocation is to our schools, but we'll hold some staff back so that we're not in a position of having to reduce teachers at the start of the school year. So, so those are some of the adjustments we make. And again, that is a, that's that small group SAM committee that starts meeting in late August and, and we meet pretty much weekly through mid-October. And Jenny, Jenny leads that and she, she lets me come to those meetings too. So. Yeah, that's how we deal with those, Eric. We're dealing with them weekly. Or at least weekly in the fall.
Thank you.
Karen?
That was one of my questions. I know that in my zone, we were highly impacted with teachers being moved. Pretty close. I mean, they just met their kids on Friday and then they were like Thursday and then they were moved on Friday and it was like traumatic for the students and it was traumatic for the staff and then having to move to a new building. So I, I think, Jessica, you said that we use a Title One cutoff date. When is the Title One cutoff date?
So there's a date that we use in the district where we are looking at the direct certification information to make projections for the next year. And so that date is March first. And so we, that's the same date that we'll be using for projecting into the twenty-two, twenty-three year for our weighted enrollment. It's the same date that the Title One team will be using.
And then what, knowing how difficult it is, what learnings did we have from last year? I know it was really hard to predict because we had kids that were supposed to come back and they didn't and all that, like.
That, that, Dr. Perez, that's, that's primarily the issue. But our learning was we were, we thought we would get about half of the students who had left the first year back last year. We built budgets around it. We built enrollment forecasts around it. And it turned out to be nowhere near where we were, which caused exactly the kind of things you're talking about, which was moves, late moves, not timely moves, not things we want to do. What you will get in a proposed budget this year is a much more modest, in fact, likely a declining enrollment environment for next year. And a more conservative, because we have not seen those kids come back yet. So hopefully we will be more conservative. I can, I, I can tell you, I speak for the group of, we are not, the, the last two Septembers have not been fun and the decisions we've made to move staff around has, has not been ideal at all. And we're going to try to avoid that this year again by being more conservative in our estimates and hoping those kids show up.
And Mike, if I can, if I can chime in there and you have the exact numbers and to Mike's point, we chose and we are right now, we are significantly overstaffed at the elementary school because we chose to do, just like you said, Karen, we didn't think it was right to, you know, after the three or four months of school or two or three months of school even then, to have kids separated from a teacher who they've developed that relationship with. But for the board to know, we are overstaffed right now at our elementary school. We're, as you can imagine, we're down about two thousand students in the, in the district. And, you know, we're, we are deficit spending and as, as we go forward. And then I just want to go back to, I think Mike and Jenny, they talked about that systems approach. Anytime you mess with the system, just try to address one person's need or something. Once you get away from that system and those, the value of the system, you, once you open that door, it can be very tricky to, to, to close the door. Now, having said that, we do know that we have some, we have some specific issues at various levels, i.e. middle schools, some of our higher poverty schools and, and I think what Mike said, going back and revisiting the allocation model, but remember, we just, this is really the first year we've really been able to see what it does. But we just thought it would be great for you to see. If you're a high poverty school, you're going to have some significant increases in not only your certified staffing, but that could also impact some of those specialized folks that are, that are in your system. The one thing that I think this board will have to deal with and the new superintendent is just looking at when that ESER money goes away because it is supporting so much of our needed social and emotional learning supports that are out there and how to make sure that we are going to, you know, prioritize the dollars that we do have. So.
Yeah, that was my, my next question. My next area was around the ESER funding and our communication. So I know, Mike, you give us a report every, you know, every few meetings that tells us exactly how many teachers are paid for, how many certified staff is paid for with ESER funds. And as we see, I see numbers there. I'm like, every time you show us that, I'm like, oh my goodness, like those people are going to be, you know, like those, those won't be there. We have to, we don't, we don't necessarily have another pot of money, but we're going to fund all those and we have a levy too to pay for teachers. So I, I am wondering about our kind of communication campaign to our community. So they're not shocked about decrease in, in, you know, the, the student to teacher ratio is going to increase and letting them know way ahead of time, you know. And what will our process be? I'm assuming it's definitely going to impact our SAM model, right?
Right.
So what is our process going to, and this is not an answer right now, but I'm like, I want to be able to explain to our community, this is a process we're going to use to reorganize our SIA funds and whatever other funds are around to address our SAM model, knowing that ESER will come, will go away and then really having a campaign out, full-out campaign saying, hey, let us know if you're coming back. We're figuring out staffing for your schools and we will be, you know, smaller numbers of students means less staff in your buildings. And if you all of a sudden decide to come back, you know, early on it, we will welcome you back because we're excited you're coming back. But it will be a little bit bumpy in your class sizes if we don't know ahead of time. So we're excited to have people back at any time that they want to come back. At the same time, we need to know ahead of time as much as possible so that our staffing can be as correct as possible, I guess I would say.
Yep. That's great points, Dr. Perez. I appreciate the thoughts. It is, it, it is going to be a delicate balance. You'll see it when we propose the budget. We'll have the discussion about the number of ESER positions and It it is going to be a delicate balance. You'll see it when we propose the budget. We'll have the discussion about the number of ESSR positions and. We will always show you that. Three-year trend or next year, two-year trend of the money and what's left. Uh, so that folks could see uh the impact and and. And I'll also tell you that internally, all those positions that we've hired are are listed as temporary positions. So um from a staff perspective, if you're in the temp, fill in the blank position, um. We're being careful to make sure we let people know that their their current positions are temporary. Even though they might last a couple of years, for us, it's still a temporary position. So.
We want to keep our staff, right? We we need them. We have been having a shortage of staff, so we need them. Um, and having them as informed as possible, our community as informed as possible is really important.
Excellent. Agreed.
Then my other piece, and I know it doesn't fit into the SAM model, but it also has to do with staffing allocation model. Um, it's for our ELD staffing allocation model. And I um I know many districts have um staffing allocation models for ELD teachers that. If there are a larger number of newcomers and level one and two students at the schools, then that staffing allocation. Is a little bit higher than if you have levels fours and fives. So maybe at some later date, we can learn a little bit about. The ELD staffing allocation model in Beaverton. Um, and seeing how we're using the equity lens in in that process as well.
Sure, we can bring that back.
I think that's all I had. Thank you. Thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Um, I got a quick question for you, Mike, uh and then maybe a little bit of a soapbox. Um, do we do something like a one percent holdback?
Yeah, that's what we did this last year.
Okay, okay. And maybe just by point of illustration, one percent holdback is where you. And and Mike, if I may explain you this wrong, please correct me, but it's like you're holding back one percent of your staffing budget. That you don't release until like the second or third week in September when you have a better idea of what the numbers are.
Or earlier, Tom, it might be earlier. Um, but we want to, we want to be pretty sure we've got kids registered and showing up. Um, so yeah, that's 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 exactly right. We 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 allocate a certain number of staff and then. Um, last year, actually, what we did was, what what was it, Jessica? One percent? At title and three percent in non-title schools.
Yeah.
So we actually increased the holdback because we were so nervous last year um as we started the school year. Uh, one percent would be typical though. And again, what we're trying to do when we do that. Uh. Chair Collette is to minimize that transfer and moving around once the school year started.
Exactly. And it helps smooth things out if we've got class size bubbles and.
Yep.
Um, Karin, I see you have another question.
This, but you were just hold, talking about the holding back some funds. It made me think about our um. Um, also our, the pot of money that we hold back, like the percentage that we talked about the last meeting, right? There's a certain percentage of money that we have to, we want to keep in our funds. I can't remember, what was that percentage again?
Our reserves. So uh uh by policy, the school board has said we need a five percent reserve in the general fund and then just a five percent. Financial reserve overall. It can be another. So so a total of ten would be the minimum.
So that we can, in ca, you know, in case of an emergency, we can kind of look at that, use some of that. So it's important to us to keep that certain reserve there. Um, as we look forward, especially with this ESSR funds going away um over the next couple of years um. And trying to keep our amazing staff on board. Um, we don't want to lose any of our staff and then looking into um the levy as it comes up as well for keeping our staff.
That's next year.
Yeah.
And the the kind of closing comment I have is I was having a conversation the other day with an education professional in another state. And we were actually talking about some of the same ratios, like the ratios we're looking at here in the SAM. They were much lower ratios. And a big part of our issue has to do with state funding, you know, Oregon used to be the bottom of the barrel for state funding for education. Um, and you know, I remember growing up in the nineties uh watching Measure Five come through and watching all the cuts to education in the Dunesbury cartoon that. Hope that all of the things that we had done to our education funding system and the negative effects that it had for our kids. Um, we've made some steps forward since then. The Student Investment Act was a huge step forward. But we got a ways to go here too. You know, when we're talking about. What we really want to see in terms of class sizes and what the research shows. What we want in terms of wraparound services for our kids, there's a bigger picture here and that bigger picture has to do with state funding and it has to do with what we get from the legislature every year. You know, when you look at the last biennium and this biennium, we only got a three percent increase. When you look at what inflation is at, that inflation number is closer to seven percent over the last year. We got a three percent increase over two years and a seven percent inflation over one year. That puts us behind the ball. And that is no good for kids and that is not what we need. The the funding that we need to be able to help our kids. So one of the things we do as a board is it's very important to engage. With the legislature as we come into a long session and they start to make the decisions about those numbers. And it's also important to keep our eyes on opportunities in the future where we can receive. More larger chunks of funding for our students. There's something called the Quality Education Model or the QEM. It's produced um in Salem and I think it's produced every two years. I don't know if it's a biennium year or the off year, but they, it's it's education professionals who come together and they say if our state was actually doing. What we said we want to do for our kids, what would that funding level look like? Before the Student Investment Act, we were routinely two billion dollars off as a state. Two billion dollars. That's closed some since then, but that is not closed all the way. My guess is that's closed by half, something like that. And so we've got a ways to go. So one thing I would just say is like, there's a conversation in here about how we allocate resources. But there's a bigger conversation about how we get more resources so that we can do more things for students. And that conversation is about working with our local legislators. It's about talking to folks about the challenges. It's about bringing them into our classrooms, showing them what's going on. I, the reason I serve on the school board is education is, I believe, the best investment any community can make. It's your economy, it's your political system, it's pretty much everything in your community comes at some point or other through that school system and that's how we generate. More dollars and how we have uh active citizens and how we keep our quality of life up. So I won't go further on my soapbox. But this conversation definitely triggered that for me. Because I I think, you know, we, it's a good conversation to have about resources and I appreciate what's being done here. But I also agree with board members who are like, but this isn't enough, right? This isn't enough for this school. This is not enough.
I wanted to reach out.
What we're facing right now.
I'm sure.
And so, uh, you know, to get to that place of enough is going to take continued advocacy. It took us. Two, two and a half decades to get where we are now with that first installment of funding in the SIA. We just need to keep it up so that, you know, down the road, one day we can look around and our our schools are funded where they need to be to meet the needs of our kids. So. I will. Put my soapbox down there, but if there's anything I feel incredibly passionate about, it's that. And moving on, uh stepping off the box, uh I think we have ESSR capital projects next.
Yep, great transition into capital projects with ESSR funding. So good evening, Chair Collette. Good evening, school board members and Superintendent Grodding. I'm Josh Gomez, Chief Facilities Officer, and I'm joined today um by our new administrator for Maintenance and Custodial Services, Ron Ummali. So Ron is on the screen. He's coming to us from the city of Portland. Where he had approximately nine years of. Experience with the city and various positions, capital projects and maintenance. It's great to have him on board. So Ron, I'll turn it over to you to see a couple of quick comments.
Yeah, good evening, um. Ron Ummali, I, like Josh said, I came from the city of Portland and I'm. I'm just really excited to to be here. Uh, this is. You know, my my two kids go to the Beaverton School District, one in Conestoggin and one shows heights. So. Um, this is a great opportunity for me. I'm glad to be here.
All right, great. Thanks, Ron. So Ron's been on board for five weeks and uh. You know, here recently we had Mountain View. We had that uh. Apartment complex townhome that caught fire, had a lot of smoke. We had to uh close school for a couple of days. But Ron was onsite, very dedicated. It's great having him on board. So. Thanks, Ron, for that quick introduction. Um, so we're here to talk about capital expenditure projects. That are funded by ESSR. Um, school board, I have nine slides total. So what I ask is if you have any questions, to put them in the chat and we'll get to them at the end of the brief. Going to. So the purpose of our brief today is to talk to you about, give you an update about capital projects and I'll give more background about. The timeline and how we got to where we are today. But more specifically, the important thing is that for ESSR reimbursement, for our school district to get reimbursed by with ESSR funds for capital projects. Uh, the Department of Education is requiring that the school board that you approve. The capital projects that are over twenty-five thousand dollars. So I'll talk about that at the end of the brief, how you will do that for us. Moving forward. So that's why we're here today. So for background, I wanted to go with the timeline. How did we get to here today? In terms of having you approve capital projects and just kind of a a a understanding of from ESSR projects and how we put a list together. So in April of twenty-twenty-one, as you can see on the screen. Facilities and Maintenance got together, we developed an initial initial list of projects. So we were told you have ESSR funding available. Um, can you put together a project list so that we can um? Use these funds. The estimate, as you can see on the screen, twenty-one point six five million is what we came up with. And we were focused on schools that needed mechanical ventilation. So if you go back to last year, I briefed you about. A mitigation strategy with ventilation, bringing in more outside air. And so by focusing on mechanical ventilation. We wanted to address that first with these additional funds. We also then from there, moving forward, we wanted to focus on projects that we had from our condition assessment, the FCA. We know we have a lot of projects, deferred maintenance, huge deferred maintenance list. And we wanted to be able to look at that. So that was in April of twenty-twenty-one, we came up with an estimate of about twenty-one million. Then in October of that year. Um, the available budget came to us. So we. Looked at a big, big project list, twenty-one million, but the available budget, because we just talked about. Um, ESSR money that was needed for staffing. We had to uh decrease our our budget down to two point three one million. So that's where we were at at that point in time in October. So a big drop in the budget, but that was okay. We were going to move forward with the plan. And then in late October of uh, October twenty-fifth. Uh, Associate Superintendent Schofield, he briefed you on. Really the plan for the ESSR. It was a big spreadsheet, gave a presentation. He hit high-level points about the projects that we. I'm going to show you here in in a couple of uh seconds. Also of note, in October, actually that same day, coincidentally. The um Department of Education put out the requirement that a school board. Would have to approve any capital expenditure projects using ESSR funds that's over twenty-five thousand dollars. So just wanted to give you a sense of that timeline. And now moving to this calendar year in February. We have um talking to the um Mike Schofield, we have more funds that are available, so approximately seven million dollars more on top of what. We had originally budgeted of two point three one million. So there's an increase in funds, which is a good news story. And we were able to add more projects. So that's some background on the timeline and how we got to where we are today. So now I want to take you to that point in time in October of twenty-twenty-one. So you heard Superintendent Schofield talk about. The um funding expires in. Uh. September of twenty-twenty-four. So we broke out our project list in three years. Um, current school year, year two would be twenty-two, twenty-three, and then year three would be twenty-three, twenty-four. And if you were to go on to our district website, you would see this plan and Superintendent, um Associate Superintendent Schofield's. ESSR presentation that he gave back in October. And I'm just hitting the highlights for you in the presentation. So in year one, I talked about adding mechanical ventilation. So at Barnes Gym, West TV Gym, there's no ventilation in those two gyms. And so those those were our target schools that we looked at. We had our estimates defined at that time. You can see the the estimates on the right-hand side. At Montclair Gym, they have ventilation, but we wanted to improve the mechanical ventilation. And so we have an estimate there of two hundred K. At Heighton, Keniman and Earl Hassel. We have. Um, we had existing bond projects, but we wanted to add scope to that project so that we could provide more um HVAC repair. So it was just adding on to the bond project and that was only at two hundred and sixty-five thousand. In year two, we had Nancy Riles Elementary School. We wanted to replace the chiller. Ventilation is is important, same with the chiller where we provide um the cooling for our facility. Because we have increased outside air in our buildings. The chillers just can't keep up with the cooling, so we needed to uh address the the chiller itself and replace an older chiller. And our estimate was three hundred thousand. Southridge High School, I think, some of you were in Southridge High, Southridge High School when we had um. Um, some cooling issues over the summer, where you can uh go back and remember that. But our plan was to refurbish the units that were on the rooftop and upgrade the controls. Based on the available budget that we were given of two point three one million. We had to bring that scope down to a million. Wasn't nearly enough to do what we wanted to do. But again, we were working with the budget of two point three one million. And then in year three, our plan was to address Raleigh Hills. I know Raleigh Hills is a um uh a project in a proposed bond. But it was important enough to put Raleigh Hills on there because we need to upgrade the controls to improve. Uh ventilation in the um in that school. It's a placeholder. This is a point-in-time plan. And for Raleigh Hills. If the bond were to, the next bond were to pass and be successful, we would take that project off. Again, this is our planning back in October of twenty-twenty-one. So now what I'm going to do is I'm going to show you, because we have additional funds available now, an additional seven million on top of. The two point three million, I'm going to show you a revised plan as of today and where we stand with that. So here's a revised project list that we have come up with as of April of this year. The updates are in blue, so I'm starting with year one. So bear with me here as I go through this. Um, for Barnes Elementary School Gym, you can see no change in the scope. We're adding mechanical ventilation. We're still at two hundred K as a as our estimate. Our status at this time is we've got a request for proposal and process and we're planning to complete this project in the summer of twenty-twenty-two. Uh, West TV Gym, the um uh the ventilation to that school, we have a contract in place. Um, the equipment's been ordered and we're estimate to complete that project in the summer of twenty-twenty-two. So that price uh, contract price is a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So we had a placeholder, if I go back. Of a hundred thousand. So based on the actual amount. You can see the increase, it's one twenty-five. So the the plan will change as we, you know, refine the numbers and go through. Montclair Gym, we have a um a contract in place. We're at three hundred K and that's going to improve the mechanical ventilation. Uh, the group of projects that I talked about earlier, we had previously Heighton, Keniman and Earl Hassel. Again, an existing bond project that we were adding scope to it at only two hundred and sixty-five thousand. What we were, what we were planning to do now is we're going to. Um, fund all the bond planned work that we have currently planned for um with this current bond at two point two eight million. And McKinley is part of that project scope. Sometimes we group projects together, so McKinley is part of that. And um we feel it's a great opportunity to take the ESSR money and pay for. Um, a project that was planned using the two thousand fourteen bond deferred maintenance. Let me go back. Uh, Heighton came off because we were able to take care of Heighton internally within our um. Uh, within our maintenance team. And then at ISB, we had some work that was done in the current, in the current bond. We added one rooftop unit to the gym that was completed last summer in twenty-twenty-one. And then we have nine rooftop units that are going to be added or replaced on the modular in the summer of twenty-twenty-two. And that is at six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. Okay. These are existing bond projects. We're going to fund them with um with ESSR dollars. I'll talk about the impact to the bond here later on. So that's year one, that's the change that's happened. For year two, no change with Nancy Riles, the replacement of the chiller. We're still at three hundred K. That's our current estimate as of today. Um, for Southridge High School. You now see replace in the, on the slide and at four million increase, we were going to refurbish with the budget of a million. But now that we have additional funds available, we've increased our budget to four million. That'll afford us the opportunity to replace the units at Southridge. So we can do more work, get more scope into that project. At West TV, we want to improve ventilation in the cafeteria. They have existing ventilation system. It's undersized. And we want to improve the ventilation in that uh in in that space. At ISB, we'd like to do additional work, A and B halls in the in the building itself, do miscellaneous HVAC repairs. We'd also like to do classroom HVAC improvements because the air. Is sitting up high in the classrooms and what we want to do is be able to push the air down so we have better cooling and better heating. So we have a an estimate placeholder for that. And then we also have um two thousand fourteen bond deferred maintenance work that's planned at these schools here, El Monica, Greenway. Nancy Riles and Stoller. We're basically upgrading controls, we're um. Uh, refurbishing fans, replacing fans, doing a lot of work there that's already planned in our current deferred. in our current deferred maintenance. And that's at one point two uh, million. And then a year three, Raleigh Hills is still a placeholder at two hundred and fifty K. Um, again, approved controls. If the bond were to pass, then we would take that off and apply those dollars to something else. So now our total revised estimate as of today is ten point one million. You can see it there. It's an increase of what I proposed before of about seven point eight million. I know only available budget is seven million, but we have to, we, it, most of these are estimates and it's what we know of as of today. So we have a three year plan. As we move forward, as we get contracted prices, we will um, uh, make updates to our plan and, and target that seven million uh, increase. So the impact to the current capital bond. So I talked about taking the Esther dollars and paying um, paying for current capital bond work. What that'll do, it's a positive impact for us is that uh, provides about four point one three million in deferred maintenance to this current bond, which is a good news story. That allows us to apply those funds to other projects in our deferred maintenance list. And some examples that I give up there, we have um, we have floors that are rubberized gym floors that contain mercury at the schools that you see up there, Five Oaks, Highland Park, Mountain View. Those floors are safe to use as of today. We have an outside consultant who does a visual assessment and they um, test the air quality. But it would be great to abate those floors and replace them. And so that's a, that's example of what we can do with the deferred maintenance money that we save. And then we also have a seismic upgrade project at McKinley. It's about two point five million. If, and we have a grant application for that. So we should hear in May or June, if that grant is approved. If it's not, that's a opportunity there that we can look at with the four point one three million. So those are examples of what we can do with deferred maintenance. Again, great, positive impact, and it's a good news story. So what are our next steps? We're going to, we, we were going to move forward with the plan as presented to you. I talked about it's a point in time plan because contractor availability will determine who's available, what pricing we get, um, what we're able to negotiate and how that may impact our planning. So we'll continue to move forward, refine the plan as needed. For the school board specifically, what you will do is as you get these contracts to come to you in the consent agenda, that'll be your approval and that, that will check the, the block for O D E. That'll see the school board has, has uh, seen the contract and essentially given it your approval. And that'll meet that requirement so that we get our reimbursement for anything over twenty five thousand. And that's it. Board, that's the end of our presentation. So now I will stop the screen share and open it up for questions. Okay, Becky, oh, go ahead, Tom.
I'll, I'll, I'll go with anybody who calls me. Uh, thanks, Josh. First question is, um, because it is Esther funds, but there's, I, I, I really appreciate how creative you guys have been with, with, with the financing, taking from here, adding to there, doing the best you can with every dollar. I really appreciate that. Um, because they're Esther funds, does that mean the BAC, you got, you went through BAC on, on deciding these projects?
Through the uh, the bond accountability committee. Um, we have talked about it. We will go into more detail with them. Um, they're aware of it um, of the opportunity, but we wanted to approach the board first as a plan and, and be able to share that. I've talked about Esther funding with the BAC before, and so they know that these are dollars. And, and at that point in time, we talked about a smaller budget. Now to come back to them and say, we have more funding, it's a great opportunity, we will do that and share that with them.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then my second question is, uh, I know everyone is different. Um, and I know we've been using our ventilation systems much harder than what we anticipated because, so the longer we use them, the harder they use. I'm sure it's, it takes the wear and tear more. But when you look at Southridge, which I'm very familiar with, when you look at Southridge, um, that school um, was built in like nineteen ninety nine, is, is twenty three years usually the give and take on a given HVAC system?
Uh, it, it is. I mean, it, you know, it's, we are running, we are running our equipment to failure for the most part. So that, you know, as we get new equipment onboard, that's why a bond is so important. At a future point in time, I'll brief the board about our um, we, we have McKinstry who helped us with the condition assessment.
Right.
We are using McKinstry for an engineered maintenance plan. They were going to help us look at our staffing in our maintenance team and look at gap analysis and what we should be doing. My goal is to improve our preventive maintenance plan so that we get better. But to go back to your question, we are running equipment hard, it has been hard for many years. And so uh, some, some pieces of equipment, depending on manufacturer, depending on quality, they're just going to happen to fail faster than something else that was provided at the same time.
It's just hard for me while we're going out for this bond right now that you kind of, you kind of hope that you have some of these puzzle pieces in place because it just seems like we're just constantly, constantly running, you know, further behind. And so that was it. I was just surprised to see the Southridge one happen to be when I remember when the school was built. And so I thought it had a little bit longer lifespan than that. So thank you.
Yep. Uh, I think, based on my screen, I may go with Eric. I see your hand up there.
Two little questions. So um, first one, I know that um, you know, Esther funds are, they're fungible. We use a lot of them to help out shore up a lot of the, the job roles we have, right? For um, you heard Jenny Handsman and
Right.
and Schofield. So how do you guys, you know, taking a seven million dollars from into facilities where we might get a bond? How did that negotiation with like Jenny and Schofield and Don and stuff like that? Because you know, those are things that have helped us a lot during this um, downturn.
Right. Well, that's, that's why I wanted to share the timeline. Um, Eric, we know that there's staffing that's needed. We know the social work that's needed, the other, other areas of the district that require. We started out high, but based on what was available, we came down, we had to bring it down low for a budget. We did ask for personnel staffing. We've asked for additional HVAC techs. We've asked for um, custodians because of the impact with cleaning and disinfection. We have, as of today, we have fifteen vacancies. And on top of that, we have daily, uh, in our custodians. And on top of that, we have daily um, uh, callouts. People calling sick, people are on vacation or in training. It's constantly balancing. So we've asked for additional custodians under Esther. So we, you know, Mike and Jenny and never, you know, they've been a great partner in this. And uh, we've been able to, to get additional staffing from the maintenance and custodial side with Esther.
If I can, if I can, Josh, Eric, to your point, uh, if there is, i- if there ever was a silver lining to COVID, I think what it did show us was how important our ventilation systems are to the breathing and the safety of our kids. So when we started doing some, whether it was air quality um, tests and making sure that we were really committed to safety, I think it, I think it brought probably some attention to the operational side of the district that often is the first to get neglected. Uh, that at some point, we, we, we've got to keep up with the operational side also. Um, and who knows when this, when the next pandemic is going to come, that we're going to have to ensure some of the safety parts of our, of our system, whether it includes, you know, we went through the lead in the water type of thing, and we're going through the air type. And so I think that the one thing that COVID did do, it highlighted uh, the importance for preventative maintenance, but also it really had us take an in look depth at all of our systems.
And if Eric, I can add another element to that. Back in the first year of our conversation on Esther, there was um, seven million dollars was in reserve in essence, but we needed to hold off on that based on the needs that we would not necessarily forecast out um, to operate our schools in a safe manner just from a staffing standpoint and the sort. So those in essence were held in reserve. And we were able to free those up and develop this plan and moving forward. And we can't wait until the last year to expend these resources because this takes us truly two years of planning and be able to secure the contractors in doing that. So we can't wait to the last minute to have those funds released to us. Um, but that was part of the plan from the outset. But we also knew that if that seven million dollars needed to be cut into to support our students and staff, that was a priority for us. We knew that from the outset.
Okay. And then, thank you. Thank you all, guys. I have one more little small question.
Sure.
Uh, and it looked like you already did a little, Josh, like I know that um, you're looking at the future and if we get the bomb measure, you don't want to like put good money in the school if it's going to be torn down and put up a new school. So um, if the demographics are right, you know, we might have a consolidation in the future, potentially have to, right? As a district is, you know, enrollment declines potentially. So do you ever look at some of those projects, say, hey, those are maybes because, you know, in the future, why would I put good money in the investment into a building that maybe it'll be consolidated with another one or some other kind of methodology? So how do we plan that out like maybe three, four, or five years out?
Yeah, there's a balance with that, Eric, in that our foreman, we really rely on our HVAC um, foreman to talk about the timeframe, talk about future planning, talk about the what ifs, but we also respect that there's recommendations to do stuff here near term because we need to be able to make sure things don't fail quickly.
And Eric, those are separate conversations that need to be held separately. Um, Josh and, and Ron, they're very much on the facility side. Josh is aware of potential conversations in the future where we may need to have consolidation. But those are not final decisions. Those have to be made by you as a school board, as you're aware. Um, and we would not do that just in a short amount of time. That's a process. We would have to walk our community through and have an understanding of what that plan would be.
And plus, I like the way you showed like the rally you have like as a maybe, you know, if we get the bomb measure and get a new school, then yeah, why would you throw good money on a school where it's going to rebuild anyways? So that was, I like the way you guys noted that very.
Yeah, it was important enough for our foreman that he said, we, you know, we have to look at the controls. I'd like to do that sooner rather than later, but we said, here's a a potential bond that'll come. And if, you know, if that, that gets approved by the community, then that, that project will come off the list.
Okay, I know Beck will get it over the line. So trust it, we'll be saving that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, right, Becky?
All right. Um, thanks, Eric. Uh, Sunita?
I think Karen had her hand out first. Want to go, Karen?
Go, I was just going on orders, great.
Yeah, um, well, thank you for the information. This is helpful. Um, so s- some of the stuff you said that the seven million will take care of is from the twenty fourteen bond, right?
Right, right.
And then that will save money and will be pushed into our current bond if it passes. So we will get an additional four million for the deferred, deferred maintenance. Right now we have like hundred and twenty million.
Yeah, it'll go into this current two thousand fourteen bond. So we, we have a deferred maintenance category in this current bond. It's called the building condition assessment. We call it the BCA.
Right.
But by paying those planned projects with Esther, it adds more capacity to our current two thousand.
Twenty fourteen bond.
Yes.
Right. So how much will we have, will we have left over? Will we have to use that by the end of next year or can we put that money? Would you have to use that by next year?
Well, it'll be part of our plan. This is where we talked about with the BAC, about what's the plan to close out this current bond. Several factors in that. If we get additional money, we have to plan that out, like the four million that I talked about. If the next bond is approved, we have a placeholder in that deferred maintenance for Beaverton High School roof replacement at four million. We wouldn't have to apply that in the deferred maintenance next month. So we would have additional funds, which is a good thing to have. And so we, we would work through that plan on what are those projects? How do we prioritize them? What's the timeline? And so we would, we would work that, but that's this current bond.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yep.
Karen? For me, I think it was, they might have already answered my question, but for, I was kind of for Mike, like, I, I thought with the Esther funds, they say, okay, if, are there maintenance pieces that you can do that are the impact of safety and health of students because of COVID?
Right.
And that's why we're going for these replacements of HVAC systems because that's a direct. So we can say, we had it, we needed to replace them anyways to make it safer for our students, but because this Esther funds are, are saying things like COVID related stuff like HVAC systems, um, you can use this money for, you might as well use it. I, I thought it was like, oh, I almost, in my mind, I had made two pots of money. Like there's a stuff that we use for COVID related um, pieces for instruction. Um, and then there's these pieces for maintenance. It's almost like two pots. I, I don't, I, in my mind, I had it mixed them like this is, it could be either for instruction, you know, for the kids this way or for the kids that way. Is it two kind of pots of money they're offering or is it just one big pile?
So it, it's, it's one big number. Karen, in terms of what we have in Esther funds, but with the way we presented it to you last October, we did staff and kind of stuff, right? So we did do it in two buckets for you last October where we said, this is what we're spending on staffing. This is what we're spending on HVAC or uh, curriculum or other kinds of items that weren't staff related. Um, and that's where these dollars are coming from. And if you'll remember, and we will give you an update as we go through our budget process this year, but the idea here is we need some balance of not all staff. Um, we needed some um, resource on the capital side so that we, we didn't go off that cliff at the end of year three that we just talked about. Uh, when we were talking about Sam of, we've invested a bunch in staff or we've spent all of our dollars on staff. Um, how do we, how do, how do we come back from that, right? How do we, how do we avoid that funding cliff uh, at the end of year three? And that's what part of these dollars are doing is helping us. So Josh will spend some of this money out there in that year three that will help get us across the finish line of spending all the resources down. But instead of spending it on staff heavy intensive resources like we are in the current year, like if you look at the current year, it's, it's the opposite, right? We're spending a lot more on staff this year in Esther than we are on capital. And that will slowly just turn over time. So again, that we avoid that cliff of um, having to do a bunch of layoffs at the end of year three because we spent all our money on staff. That's the balance we looked at. Helpful?
Helpful and painful.
Yes. I'm with you.
Agreed, Karen, a hundred percent.
Any other questions from the board? I think at the last board meeting, Becky at one point said, hooray. I think that was her entire comment. And um, not a hooray to the Esther funds going away. That is painful. One hundred percent, but a hooray to see that we're able to get this work done and, and that this could turn into additional seismic work. That's really important for our kids' safety. And so thanks, Josh, for, for putting together this plan. I'll be excited to see some of these items coming before us in, in future consent agendas. And to see what we can do actually to, to stretch further our work in that bond and improve student safety through HVAC and through seismic and really appreciate the thoughtful plan.
Great. Thanks for the uh, school board support. Appreciate it.
And I can't make the same kind of hooray, but you know, that's my, like, the best I can do. So sorry, Becky. Um, I think next, oh, we got some, some board members presenting tonight. I think we've got Sunita and Eric who are going to present to us about the BAC.
Eric, you want to go for it? We both agree on the same things. Do you want to go for it?
I want you to go for Sunita. You put, you did a lot of the hard work and email and like, you know.
Well, um, so the, the technically our bond is coming to an end, the twenty fourteen bond. So we have an option because not all the projects are done. So one of the options is that to extend the bond till next year and have the BAC present their closeout document at that time. And so that's one of the things that we need to decide whether we want to close our document now because technically the bond is ending in June. So the BAC also ends unless the board approves that extension for one year. So that's one option we have to to uh, vote on. And then the other thing is uh, the BAC members who are currently in the committee, uh, we would have them extend for one more year. If we do decide to extend the bond for, bond committee for one year and also um, give them the right to apply uh, for the next bond committee. So um, those are the three things. And Eric, you want to add anything to that or?
Yeah, the only comments it has like, um, you know, is um, BAC um, board role. We get a vet people that went on to the committee. And we really have a really talented committee with like lots of diverse construction and financial background and experience. So I think it'd be um, sad if we, we lose a lot of these people. I think it'd be ideal to keep them. And these people also like, or they're vocal, they speak up in the meetings and they ask hard questions or good questions. So I think there's a lot of value to, to get some more continuity to extend it as well as let the option of people not have a term limit, you know, so they can participate in the next one if they want. So we have that diverse um, you know, construction experience and um, and scrutiny to help the district. So so I feel like, you know, I feel strongly that, you know, senior's proposal here is very good.
And it's, just to be clear, it's before us tonight is a discussion item. So if, if folks want to talk about, hey, this looks good, or I've got these concerns, and then it'll come back in front of us as something to vote on uh, prior to future board meeting. So I see uh, Becky and then.
So um, n- not that I want to jinx anything as I'm knocking on wood, um, but what was the discussion? I, i- is this no matter what, because we, what we just talked about, that there's going to be money left over from this current bond that left over from this current bond that we're still gonna have to expend. So we're still gonna need um, the bond accountabilities input. Or is this just a discussion based on that if only we have a bond to go forward with?
So there are two separate discussions. The first discussion is on the current bond. Because it is terminated, it's ending on June thirtieth. We are recommending that it be extended for one more year. And the committee members gets a chance to stay in the current bond accountability committee. The second discussion is that if we do get um, you know, uh, the new bond, then um, we give the chance to the current board members to at least apply for the next BAC and then the board can decide. You know, who they, how many people they want and all that stuff.
And have, and if a- have you had those two different discussions with the current bond accountability committee committee members?
Yes, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Ugana?
Thank you, Sunita and Eric. So my question is, um, I'm trying to understand how it works. So with the current bond, we have a committee. And when this bond ends, we need to form a new committee for the new bond. Are we able to transfer the comm- the current committee to the upcoming bond for this year? Uh, do we have to totally, uh, disband that committee and then form a new one?
Yeah, I think that's a good question. So so there, so let's just handle the first current bond. You're saying the current bond, we are recommending, let's extend it till next year and let the bond members stay there. Then if we do get the new bond, right? It's not the transferring. It's just basically we want, people will apply to be in the new for new bond accountability committee. And we are saying that let the current members at least apply for it and then we can select. So first we have to decide about the extension of one year. Because there's no point in closing out a bond if there are still projects that are going to be done, you know, next year. So.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
So just to clarify, at our next school war meeting, we would vote on extending for a year. We don't necessarily have to vote until after the bond is let's, I'm gonna be optimistic that it passes in May, but we could vote after the May for the giving the current bond committee members a chance to apply.
I, yeah, I would be.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that.
Yes, that's a very good.
Yeah.
Good, very good clarification, Susan. Um, so it primarily we really need to continue the guidance of this current BAC. What the work and the continuity. We've got eight years of history with with three of these members. Phenomenal history and background. So having that continuity for nine years because the bylaws say that a BAC member can only serve for eight.
That's that's true.
So we need to extend them. You need to officially extend them for one year. That's your first action. You have six other members who are sitting on that BAC who potentially have the ability to go further because they don't have eight years of service at the BAC. They may have to serve in a dual role, the two thousand fourteen bond and a twenty twenty two bond at the same time. So in essence, that just allows them to have that lap over of a year. But that continuity is essential for us for the two thousand fourteen bond.
Becky?
Yeah, I Carl, you exactly said, that's what was the kind of the little missing link there was. Our, uh, the board's responsibility was this was set up for an eight year to oversee this bond. We need to now as a board to say, we're actually going to extend this to a nine year. So that that's what it wasn't just because of twenty fourteen and going through as well as the things you just said, Carl, about the history and the three, but it was really because the board had, this was an eight year thing, and now we're we're asking the board to approve it to a nine year thing, if we if we choose to do that.
Other questions and comments? I would just say I really appreciate this plan. Um, I love the idea of being able to keep the folks we have on. It takes a long time to be able to understand our bond and the specific projects. Not to mention, you know, learning how to speak EduSpeak and all the acronyms we have and then adding construction on top of that. That's quite a skill. Um, and and I, you know, my understanding is even if we extend both this group out and we allow them to be able to apply for a future bond committee, that there's still an opportunity every couple of years to go out and see if anyone else is interested and and get some new folks on there. So we're not preventing, you know, our community from stepping up and getting some of that turnover. But we are preserving the opportunity to 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 keep people who really have a strong vested interest in a body of knowledge or really strong body of knowledge about what we're doing. So I appreciate that. And then to the year close, year and closeout piece, it it doesn't make any sense to end on the fiscal year if your projects are going over that. We we need to understand where this bond actually closed. Not on some artificial date, but when when all the projects are done. So thank you for that thought, guys. And we look forward to to voting on something in in your future. So, uh, let us know what you put ink to and we'll uh, make sure that it makes its way to a consent agenda or an item.
Perfect. And actually, it is forecasted to be at your end of April board meeting and your consent agenda.
Okay, thanks, Carl. Um, with that, we will tackle the actual consent agenda tonight. So do I hear a motion from anyone on the board to approve the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I second the motion.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded and we'll now go for a vote. Uh, board members, when I call your name, answer with aye or nay. Uh, Susan?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
Sunita?
Aye.
Ugana?
Aye.
Becky?
Aye.
Tom, aye, and it passes unanimously. Um, so that is the end of our work session. We're gonna adjourn now for the evening. Uh, board members stay on because we have an executive session uh, that we're gonna start when this meeting closes and we'll go from there. Thanks, everybody. Lots of good information tonight and um, looking forward to, um, oh, Karen, do you have something?
Um, I just wanted, I don't, do we say comments at the end?
No, not at a work session. Um, but we have an April board meeting coming up, so don't lose that thought. Just hold it for a couple of weeks, okay? Um, all right, we'll adjourn the meeting for the night and board members stay on for the executive session.